Good evening, and thank you for tuning into our virtual city council meeting of November 22, 2021. Attending the meeting tonight via teleconference are council members Aguirre, Espinoza Garnica, Gee, Ready, and Smith, Vice Mayor Hale, and myself. As a reminder, we are holding tonight's meeting pursuant to Assembly Bill 361 regarding teleconference meetings under the Brown Act. Items will be taken in the order they are listed on the agenda, and I'd now like to ask our city clerk if she would call the roll.
Thank you. Good evening. Councilmember Aguirre.
Here.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica. Is here. Councilmember Gee.
Here.
Councilmember Ready.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Here.
And Mayor Howard.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. Now I'd like to ask Councilmember Alicia Aguirre if she would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Please join me as we salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Aguirre. Moving on to item number four, Presentations and Acknowledgements. We'll start with 4A. Tonight, we are highlighting an extraordinary and exciting development right here in our downtown library and giving special recognition to the group who helped make it a reality. It's my pleasure to present the following proclamation to the Redwood City Library Foundation for their contribution towards the Library Maker Space, which is a community workspace where people with common creative interests can collaborate in a self-directed, hands-on learning environment. I will now read excerpts of the proclamation. Whereas the mission of the Redwood City Library Foundation is to support the Redwood City Public Library in cultivating literacy, lifelong learning, and community connections, the Redwood City Library Foundation has completed fundraising to construct and equip a Maker Space in the downtown library. And whereas a fully-equipped Maker Space brings the full spectrum of science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics, or STEAM, this programming is brought to the community. Maker Spaces are inclusive, particularly to people unfamiliar with maker activities, and available to a broad ethnically and socio-economically diverse audience. And whereas the Redwood City Library Foundation has been fundraising since 2019 for the Maker Space Initiative, and is grateful, we are grateful for the vision, generosity, and support of partners such as the Saga Foundation, the City of Redwood City, and all the donors, sponsors, business partners, volunteers, and library patrons who made it possible to construct and equip the Maker Space on behalf of the Redwood City Public Library. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Diane Howard, Mayor of Redwood City, do hereby salute and congratulate the Redwood City Library Foundation, the Redwood City Public Library, and their partners on the completion of the Maker Space in our downtown library, a vital community resource. I encourage everyone, community members, to take advantage of the Maker Space and continue to partner with the Redwood City Library Foundation and the Redwood City Public Library to maintain and expand its impact and reach. The Executive Director of the Library Foundation, Lisa Hicks-Dumansky, has joined us this evening to accept the proclamation. I'd now like to turn it over to Lisa to say a few words. Lisa, nice to have you here.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I am doing, I am accepting this recognition on behalf of the whole community because it was truly the whole community that fundraised together to make this possible, and it was through the vision of the actual library itself to ask the foundation to partner with them to make this happen. And after a two-year journey, we're here, and we're very, very pleased. But it couldn't have happened without the whole community. And so again, we accept this great honor, recognizing that it took a whole community to get us here, and it'll take a whole community to see it forward in the future as well. And I, I would like to give some time to Derek Wolfgram, if that's possible, because he was my partner in crime in all of this.
Certainly. Derek?
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Yeah, this has been a labor of love for sure to get this innovative space open for the community. And we've been just really grateful that the Library Foundation has put in all of the work to raise the money to get us to this point. And I know Lisa may want to say something about the sneak preview event that's coming up next week, but we are hopeful that if the public health data allows, that we'll have the, the formal grand opening of the space in January. But we're, we're holding tight to see whether that actually happens. And in the meantime, there is a sneak preview event that's scheduled for next week, and I will let Lisa tell you a little bit about that. But yes, thank you for the, the recognition for the Library Foundation, for the terrific work they've done to help get to this point. And as Lisa said, it has truly been a full community effort. So very, very grateful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Lisa. Let us know when the sneak preview is.
So the sneak preview is December 2nd, which is Thursday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the downtown library, and tickets are available. I suppose I could put the link in the chat, but if you just go to the foundation website, you can easily get to our ticketing page. We are asking for a suggested donation to continue support of the Maker Space. We haven't finished fundraising, but we're very close. So we're still, we're still doing fundraising around the Maker Space. And along that line, I, I really want to make sure that I thank the board of the foundation because it was, I came into this halfway through the fundraising cycle, and it was the board's vision and their tenacity of getting out in the community and leveraging promotions and, and relationships and, and connections to really help this fundraising happen. And I also want to call out, as we, as, you know, as the proclamation said, the Saga Foundation, because their partnership and their vision really got us to the finish line in order to get to the construction phase of this project. So just David Bardasuk from the Saga Foundation, thank you on behalf of the whole community and the foundation and the library for partnering with us on the vision for our Maker Space for our community.
And Lisa, that would be great if you put in the chat, December 2nd, Thursday, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and tickets available, and maybe you have the link there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a chat on my screen, so that's why I was wondering. But I can come back on the public version of the Zoom, calling at it, maybe.
Actually, I don't think we do have a chat, so I'll just say it again, December 2nd. And if you go online or city website, just go to the library. I'm sure it's all over there, and you'll be able to click on whatever you need. So, but Lisa, Derek, thank you so much. And as you said, it takes a community. It really takes a village to create a Maker Space. And so let's hope that we will continue to be able to fundraise to make it complete. But thanks so much for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number five, Public Comment on the Consent Calendar. At this time, we'll take public comment on items that are on the consent calendar, on matters of council interest, and on items not on the agenda. This will include public comment on item 10A, the 2022 City Council Meeting Calendar. I will now turn it over to our city clerk, Ms. Aguilar, to facilitate public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Now is the time for public comment. The instructions for participating in public comment are on the screen. So if you would like to speak on matters that are on the consent calendar, matters of council interest or not on the agenda, please raise your hand now and keep your hand raised so that we can see how many speakers we have. And then we would also ask that if you have joined us by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand, and then star six to unmute yourself when you are prompted. Give it a minute. Okay, looks like we have six raised hands. Each speaker will have two minutes. The timer will start when you begin speaking. Our first speaker is Jody Paley, and Jody will be followed by Susie Payton. Welcome, Jody.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Aguilar, and Madam Mayor, and Vice Mayor Hale, and to council. I'm calling in this evening to speak on Chase the Chill. As many of you might have noticed, today was our hanging. Then we had more than a record year again. We collected over 1,000 pieces of scarves, hats, gloves, masks, and I think one pair of socks. And with the total number ended up being 1,088 items. Compare that to when we started six years ago, we were getting about 400 to 500 for a few years. They were hung today at 21 different sites around town and in Redwood Shores. And when I went looking about an hour and a half later, most of them were already gone. So I want to extend my thanks to the council and to Chris Beth and the Parks and Rec and Community Services for all the support, and most definitely to all the community members who have made things and who helped with the tagging and sorting, and who helped with the hanging today. And I'll see you back again next year. If anybody wants any more information on Chase the Chill, you can visit us on Facebook at Chase the Chill RWC, as well as reach out to me. And we have a lot of donated scarves and needle, I mean, excuse me, yarn and needles and crochet hooks for anybody who would wish to get started on making things for next year. And I'm not sure, but I think we'll let's see if we can do just as many next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jody. Our next speaker is Susie Payton, and Susie will be followed by Johanna Rasmussen. Welcome, Susie.
I had some slides?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm Susie Payton, and I'm here tonight as a representative of Arts Redwood City. Over the past decade, we've been advocating for a permanent arts center for our community. We've been encouraged to move our vision forward, and the first step was to survey the community to see if they saw a need for what we currently call the Center for Creativity. You all received longer survey results presentations. I will now go over the highlights and, and what we see as the next steps. The first slide, Survey by the Numbers. Surveys were created for four different age groups and in multiple languages. We collected 2,305 total surveys. Respondents were ages two years to over 70. There was 1,301 adults, 116 high schoolers, 374th through eighth graders, and 518 preschool through third graders. Second slide, Key Findings. Eighty-three percent of the adult respondents believe there is a need for an arts center and that it would enhance life for the community. The most compelling argument for the Center of Creativity were access to all for art classes, the healing aspect of art, and creativity improving cross-cultural understanding. The highest-ranked features of an arts center was art classes, live events, and an art gallery. Third slide, Next Steps. Arts Redwood City plans to move forward with a feasibility study early next year. We plan to meet with the county soon to discuss our vision. We believe there is a potential for collaboration. We now have two requests of the city council. Consider allowing Arts Redwood City to include city-owned property in a feasibility study. Consider making an arts center a community benefit for new development projects. We'll be meeting with the city manager and staff in December to discuss these potential next steps. We hope to add the city council and staff to our growing list of supporters and our vision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Susie. Our next speaker is Johanna Rasmussen, and Johanna will be followed by JB Pierce. Welcome, Johanna.
Thank you, Pamela. My name is Johanna Rasmussen, and I'm the Chairwoman of the Farm Hill Neighborhood Association, and I am speaking tonight to ask you to pull item 6B from the consent calendar. Residents oppose postponing the ARCs district map presentation until December 20th. The ARC has spent a considerable amount of time working on these maps, engaging with residents, and taking testimony on communities of interest. To ask them to postpone their presentation to a date when very few community members will be available to participate, December 20th, which is Christmas week, is a disservice to the ARC and to the community. We should not be agendizing important issues such as this during tonight's meeting the week of Thanksgiving and new district maps the week of Christmas time. Please, please, please don't postpone the December 6th meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Johanna. Our next speaker is JB Pierce, who will be followed by Kent Mansky.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Pierce. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome, Barbara.
I'm a former mayor and former board member of the Redwood City Education Foundation, and I'm speaking regarding the Center for Creativity. The Education Foundation long augmented the arts education offered in the schools to ensure equitable access for all students. A major aspect of the vision for the Center for Creativity is to augment the arts education offered to the students of our community. Over 1,000 students gave us their opinion on how they like to make and create, and overriding is that they like to be creative. This creativity and innovation are vital for both our students' and our community's future. The American for the Arts report states that for every $1 spent for after-school art programs, it saves communities $9 in other costs. This certainly seems like a worthy investment in our youth. Included in the long and growing list of supporters are education leaders like the Redwood City Elementary School District, John Baker Superintendent, Alisa McAvoy School Board President, Hillary Paulson, former school board member, plus the Redwood City Education Foundation and Art in Action. The planning group consulted with the Palo Alto Arts Center Director of Education and has ways for, to bring equitable art access to our community's youth. These include after-school art classes, workshops, and field trips, to name just a few. Lastly, a few comments from the survey participants. This sounds amazing. As a high school senior, I love this idea, and I see how so many people of all ages would benefit for this project. I am all for it. Another commented, I love this idea. It would be so fantastic for local elementary school children who've not had access to art education to have the opportunity for children of all students, regardless of their economic or cultural background. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Barbara. Our next speaker is Kent Mansky. Kent will be followed by Elizabeth Gomez. Welcome, Kent.
Greetings, council. I'm speaking in reference to the Center for Creativity survey results presented by Susie Payton. I've been an exhibiting artist for four decades, and I taught art and graphic design full-time at Foothill College for 25 years. I understand deeply that people in our community hunger for opportunity to think, to feel, to express, and to share their stories through art. Art rewards both creators and audience with meaning, purpose, and connection to perspectives that are critical to a healthy and diverse community. I'm a proud member of Arts Redwood City. The survey results presented tonight demonstrate the need for a permanent community arts center. For many reasons articulated tonight, we really sincerely believe now is the time to lay this foundation. Personally, as a lifelong learner and cultural worker, I travel weekly to San Francisco, Oakland, and San Jose for my cultural engagement and entertainment. I'd rather spend my time and my dollars at home within my Redwood City community. So let's do this. Let's lay the long-term foundation for creative community engagement, cultural capital, and economic capital, right here at home, right here in Redwood City. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Gomez. Elizabeth will be followed by Veronica Eskemes. Welcome, Elizabeth.
Hello, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Gomez, and I'm an artist in Redwood City, and I'm here also to support the Creativity Center. Being a local artist has been a beautiful thing in the city, but we really need a place where we can put all our abilities together. I was lucky enough to help, you know, make the mural with all the communities, a mosaic mural that we did in the Magical Bridge Playground, and I saw firsthand how the art project was a healing resource for our community. Art can be such a force to make a community happier, and I believe we need this in our city. Over 700 people came to help us to make this mosaic mural, and I could see in their faces how proud and how happy they were to be part of a community project. And we can have many more of these projects if we have a place where we can center our efforts. You know, being happy is also very important, and art gives happiness, it heals, and it makes communities stronger. So that's what I really believe that we should put all our efforts in trying to make this community center happen. The happiness that was spreaded just by being part of the mosaic mural is what makes me much more proud of being the lead artist in the mosaic mural. If you haven't seen it, please go to the Magical Bridge Playground and see what over 700 volunteers in Redwood City did to beautify and to make our city a better and happier place. Thank you very much. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Our next speaker is Veronica Eskemes. Veronica will be followed by Chris Johnson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Unfortunately, I have a lot of noise behind me because I'm here at Casa Circulo with the people dancing and singing. Good evening, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale, and city council members. I want to speak in favor of the community development space because being, working with our community through the arts for 13 years, I, I just know that arts change families and lives all over. Unfortunately, there is not many centers in Redwood City where people can come and create. So I would love the idea that have another spaces in our local community so more people can attend. And I hope this center will be a cultural inclusive for everybody. Part of the survey was taken here in Casa Circulo, and I noticed that people is angry to have more places to create. Our space is small, so I think having another space in Redwood City that can have everybody there will be a plus for our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Veronica. Our final speaker for this portion is Chris Johnson. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you, Pamela. Good evening, city council, city staff, and the public. My name is Chris Johnson. I'd like to dovetail onto Johanna Rasmussen's commentary about the scheduling of the findings and the recommendations by the ARC for December 20th. December 20th is Christmas week, and it's also Festivus for the rest of us. And I do not understand why we would schedule something of this importance, given the amount of work that the ARC has put into this, as well as the hours invested by our community into this effort of redistricting. And we're going to be presenting findings and recommendations on December 20th. It's probably one of the, if I had to guess, one of the least-attended meetings historically for city council. So I ask of you to pull the item off of consent and come up with a schedule that is more appropriate for the assertion that this is all about community engagement. Also, one of the maps being recommended by the ARC places four city council members in one district. While I recognize and I appreciate Alex Kajikian's email to me about the fact that we couldn't take where city council members lived into consideration when designing a map, we can't ignore the fact that one of the two maps being recommended has four city council members in the same district. And I'd be pressed to think that that would garner support by a majority of city councils. So while you can't use where they live to determine a map, you can't ignore the fact that four city council members live in the same district and would probably not vote for that map. So why not propose a third map? So I ask of you to look at one of the community maps, many community maps that were submitted on redistricting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, very much. We had, oh, we had one more speaker, Barbara Brichkey? If we have no more speakers, that concludes public comment for this portion, Mayor Howard.
I think there may be some technical difficulty with Mrs. Brichkey. Maybe we could ask her if she would like to speak. It's gone back and forth three times now. If you can hear me, Mrs. Brichkey, if, if you wanted your hand raised. If you're having difficulty, just unmute yourself at this time, and we can, you can speak. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. I thank all of you. Thank you, Diane. Thank you, Mayor Howard, and the council. I am just so elated with the response to the survey. I also, you know, serve on the Redwood City, Redwood City, not Arts Center. I'm one of the founders, co-founders, there are six women that founded the Redwood City Arts Center over 25 years ago. And it was a dream then that someday, someday, that we would have a true creative arts center in our city. And to see this response and been working, I mean, Susie and, Susie and Jody and the girls, the whole, and Kent, all of them, we've been talking about this at meetings for, what, the last five years, six years? So to see this come to fruition, just to bring it to council, to bring it to you, is really, I can't, you can hear the excitement in my voice, because I truly hope that I will see the day that, that there will be an arts center in our community. And I do speak, a lot of the seniors did not fill out the surveys for one reason or another, but in talking with them in our community, they are truly in favor of this. And at the arts center, we had, you know, all kinds of senior workshops. So this would be from seniors all the way down to children, and it would truly be a bonus to our community. I've always said that Redwood City was really the cultural center of the county, and this would just blow it off the top. So thank you for listening, and I just hope that we can get this going. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, very much. That concludes public comment, Mayor Howard.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. Moving on to item six, which is the Consent Calendar. Items on the consent calendar are routine in nature and are approved in one motion. I'd now like to ask the city council if they would like to make a motion or if someone has a question about the consent calendar before going forward.
So moved?
Moved by Vice Mayor Hale.
And Espinoza Garnica.
And seconded by Councilmember Espinoza Garnica. Thank you. Ms. Aguilar, would you call the roll, please?
I will. Councilmember Aguirre?
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember G?
Yes.
Councilmember Ready?
Here, here, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale?
Yes.
And Mayor Howard?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now read the items that were just approved. Final acceptance of U.S. 101 Pedestrian Undercrossing Project. Adopt a resolution revising the date by which the Advisory Redistricting Committee, or A R C, must present their recommendation to the City Council on the adoption of a new City Council District Election Map and approve the amended Advisory Redistricting Committee Activities Plan to align with the revised deadline. Resolution declaring the continued state of local emergency and affirming findings on the need for the City Council and other city legislative bodies subject to the Ralph M. Brown Act to continue remote meetings pursuant to A V. 361 to preserve public health and safety. Extension of temporary street closures through July 5th, 2022 to continue to allow the temporary outdoor business activity program during the COVID-19 emergency. Agreement with Steve Blanc Investigations for Background Investigation Services. Agreement with Cortina Productions for Media Production Services for the specialized interactive exhibits at the New Veterans Memorial Building Senior Center. Local Initiative Support Corporation, or L I S C, grant to provide outreach and application assistance for the State Emergency Rental Assistance Program, also known as California COVID-19 Rent Relief for Eligible Tenants and Landlords. Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Redwood City and the County of San Mateo for the Establishment of an Edible Food Recovery Program. Master Purchase Agreement for the Provision and Delivery of Unleaded Gasoline and Renewable Diesel Fuel. Rejection of General Liability Claims by Mr. Antonio Buckley. Waive Second Reading and Adopt Mandatory Organic Waste Disposal Reduction Ordinance to Fulfill Requirements of S B. 1383. Approve Minutes of November 8th, 2021 City Council Meeting and Approve Claims and Checks from November 22nd, 2021 through December 6th, 2021 and the Usual and Necessary Payments through December 6th, 2021. Now moving on to item number seven is a study session on site strategies for the housing element. Our Community Development and Transportation Director, Mark Munzer, will introduce the item and Principal Planner, Diana Odell, will give the presentation. Consultant Lisa Brownfield from M I G. is also available for questions. As is our practice with study sessions, public comment will follow after the City Council hears the presentation and asks questions and provides their comment. Mr. Munzer, would you like to start the presentation?
Of course. Thank you, Mayor Howard. Next slide, please. Good evening, Mayor Howard and City Council. Displayed is tonight's meeting agenda, which includes an overview of the Housing Element Process and the RENA process, which stands for Regional Housing Needs Allocation. It also includes a discussion of the community's guiding principles, a discussion on housing site strategies and the next steps in the housing element process, which will include multiple opportunities for community and public input. Tonight, we also want to speak about the extensive progress that the city has made under our current housing element, but as importantly, where we need to be for the next housing element cycle. And this includes our housing goals, our policies and solutions. As part of this work, we'll also be updating the general plan's safety element as well as create a first-ever environmental justice element. Our conversation this evening, though, will be mostly focused on the housing sites strategy to meet our state-required RENA unit numbers. But there are other components to a housing element, including the city's anti-displacement strategy, which the City Council will be reviewing early next year. Next slide, please. Here are the questions for City Council's consideration this evening. As always, we welcome any other questions or input. These questions have been discussed in the staff report packet, but they are displayed. One, do you agree with targeting a 150% RENA goal or RENA target over typical 100% target? Are there additional rezoning strategies that should be pursued specifically in our high opportunity neighborhoods? That term and designation will be discussed further in the presentation. And are there any other rezoning or alternative strategies to consider? And again, those strategies are included in your staff report. So with that, I will turn the presentation over to Diana Odell. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening. Before we dive into the details, I did want to briefly review what a housing element is. It is a chapter of our general plan that is required to be updated every eight years and has several building blocks and components. The key aspect of the housing element is goals, policies and implementation strategies that will be used to work towards the preservation, improvement and development of housing. And underneath that are three components. There is a housing needs assessment that looks at the demographics and characteristics of the city's existing housing stock. There is a constraints analysis that looks at what possible barriers, whether they're market barriers, regulatory barriers or others that inhibit the construction of that housing. And the last is the identification of sites to build housing. And that's our focus for tonight's meeting. Next slide. As Mr. Munzer mentioned, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation is one of the primary components of our housing element. It's pronounced RENA. And it's an eight-year goal for housing production. On the screen, you can see in the first column, we have what our current allotment is through 2022, which is around 2,800 units. The city has issued building permits for almost 2,900 units this cycle and is expecting to exceed perhaps 4,000 units by the end of 2022. And so we've been making excellent progress in meeting the total number of units. And we are expected to meet the targets for low-income units and above moderate. But there's still work to be done for very low and moderate income units. We are looking at a new allotment for our upcoming housing element that is nearly double what our previous allotment is, as you can see on our screen, for a total of almost 4,600 units. It's important when we think about these units to think also about the types of subsidies that is needed to provide the units. We have a very high target for very low income, over 1,000 units for this next eight years. And the lower income of a unit, the more subsidy is required to provide it. So the city will be looking at additional strategies to meet this very aggressive target for very low income. And part of the reason why this RENA allotment is so large is because the state's allocation methodology has changed. They're looking more aggressively at cities meeting their housing goals, looking at past need, looking at jobs, looking at cost burdened households and target vacancy rates. Despite this aggressive number, staff is recommending planning for additional housing beyond this new enlarged minimum RENA. Planning for more than the minimum allows for flexibility in future development and creates additional opportunities for us to address concerns with the jobs housing balance. It also creates and increases opportunities for low-income units for affordable housing to be constructed, which benefits low-income households. And if the city were to plan for 150% of its RENA allocation, it would come to a little under 7,000 units. Next slide, please. I will just touch briefly on this and spend a little more time at the end of a presentation. But one of the key points to remember with the housing element process is we are working under a very fixed timeline. So after our discussion tonight, we will begin environmental review as well as drafting goals and policies with community input throughout next year. We will be working closely with the state in having them review our work. And we are looking for a final adoption in late fall of next year with certification in January 2023. So we have a lot to do. And we've been working as efficiently as we can in meeting all the various goals of drafting this document. Next slide, please. A big part of the work we've been doing this year is community outreach. We've been holding specific workshops with our community. We've been doing a series of other outreach, both electronic, social media, flyer distribution through food distribution groups and senior centers. But we've also been spending some significant time on stakeholder engagement and going out to the community where they're already meeting and hearing from them in terms of what their concerns are. And these groups vary from business groups, Senior Affairs Commission, and we've made a specific effort to reach out to youth and teen through Sequoia High School and Teen Advisory Board. We've also been working with 21 Elements, collaborating with other jurisdictions on outreach. And most recently, we had a very important joint study session with the H H C C and Planning Commission in October. And the feedback from that meeting I'll discuss as we move throughout this presentation. Next slide, please. So staff wanted to create a structure for thinking about the decisions that we need to make on site strategies. And we developed three principles ways to think about it. The first principle is which strategies align with our community values. The second is which strategies distribute housing more evenly throughout the community. And the third principle is which strategies will result in the required number of total new homes with the affordability levels. Next slide, please. So the first principle is community values. And in spring of this year, we hosted a workshop and we also had a fairly extensive electronic survey to gather this input from our community in terms of what's most important to them for housing. We have a variety of principles on the screen. I do want to highlight a couple. Diversity is important. Maintaining and supporting ethnic and racial and economic diversity was a very high priority, as was preserving our existing low-income housing units and building new affordable homes. In the course of this, in the course of this discussion, we also met with the Senior Affairs Commission and teens. And there was discussion in those meetings about valuing senior housing and putting in special emphasis on multi-generational households. And so that's an important new value that we'll also be considering. Next slide. There it is. Thank you. Next slide. The second principle is distributing housing evenly throughout the community. Part of this is in high opportunity areas and looking at where those are located. High opportunity areas were a map that the state, in partnership with U C Berkeley, developed and was an important consideration in determining this upcoming cycle's RENA. So what you're looking at is the map of Redwood City with the darker green areas being the most high resource areas within the city. And high resource is defined as residential neighborhoods with high property values and access to good schools, parks and jobs in the greater region. One of the requirements of the housing element is not only building housing for a range of income groups, but also making sure that the housing is located throughout the city, including in high resource opportunity areas. The objective is to prevent segregation and poverty concentration. This is a new requirement as part of the housing element. And in contrast to the last cycle, where Redwood City predominantly found new housing sites located almost exclusively along commercial corridors and in our downtown. Strategies that we'll be discussing tonight, such as missing middle, accessory dwelling units and S B. 9 relate to this principle and will be discussed in more detail later in this presentation. Next slide, please. And the third principle, it's just the effectiveness of the land use strategies. How much units will we get for each one of these? And to think about it, we've created three buckets. Progress towards RENA, things that we are already doing. Mandatory strategies, things that the state will require us to do. And then lastly, the optional strategies. What additional steps do we want to take to meet our land use and residential needs? Next slide, please. The first, in terms of progress that we're already making, is accessory dwelling units. The city has revised its ordinance multiple times and it's made a huge difference in the number of units that have been produced. Prior to 2015, the city was averaging less than five units per year. And in 2020, the city permitted 60 new accessory dwelling units. The state allows us to estimate future construction of accessory dwelling units, which will bring us to about 480 new units in an eight-year period. Next slide. The second is progress towards RENA, things that we already have in the pipeline. Pipeline projects are projects that have been approved but will not be constructed before June of 2022. And these include some pretty significant projects the city's been working on. One is the South Main Development, which was approved last year and has over 500 units. Another is the Broadway Plaza Development, which is on Broadway and Woodside and will also provide a little over 500 units. Those are the types of projects that can be considered towards next cycle's RENA. In addition, the city can consider project applications that have been submitted but not yet decided. With both these types of projects, the city has approximately 3,700 units in the pipeline, with over 1,000 of them affordable to very low, low or moderate income households. And while the city can count these projects in our site planning, it does not require us to approve any pipeline applications. And for that reason, we look for additional strategies beyond what is already in place. Next slide, please. So this brings us to mandatory strategies. And the first question is about S B. 9. This law was signed, was put into effect in January of this upcoming year and was signed in September. This new law requires cities to allow up to four units per lot in single-family areas. The process needs to be ministerial, which means that there is no public hearing requirement or discretionary approvals. And all requirements and development standards should be objective. This would promote additional units in high resource opportunity areas described earlier. Staff is working very quickly on establishing a fact sheet for this law, along with a plan for when the law goes into effect. It is not yet known how many additional units could be generated. And staff will be working with the state to develop a formula similar to accessory dwelling units for how S B. 9 planning could count towards our RENA. Next slide, please. This strategy is something we call missing middle housing, but is really just about duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes. And the reason why it's called missing is because they've been very difficult to develop in the last 20 to 30 years. Staff has been working with the H H C C and Planning Commission on looking at ways to further encourage this type of housing. These areas are located in areas where it's envisioned to see high-density general plan designations. And right now, the current zoning standards restrict density for smaller lots. Provisions governing lot size, lot width and parking and potentially open space will need to be amended to make this zoning consistent with the general plan and to allow more duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes. This type of strategy was well-supported by the teens that we described, talked with and also with other groups. And as I mentioned, staff has been working with Planning Commission and H H C C since 2019 on various study issues associated with this missing middle. Staff expects that doing this zoning consistency cleanup and allowing more duplexes to be built would enable creation of up to 500 additional homes over eight years. And the city will continue to work with the state to develop a formula. So this type of zoning action will contribute to our RENA targets. Next slide. So this moves into the last group of strategies, and these are optional. And as part of these optional strategies, generally, we looked at areas that are either currently zoned commercial but don't allow residential. And we also looked at areas, areas along corridors that are next to transit or other public amenities. This on this slide, we have the proposal to look at housing along Veterans Boulevard in areas that currently don't allow residential. So this would be along Price and closer to Woodside Road. There are trade-offs with the strategy, such as rezoning from a commercial district to a mixed use or a district that allows both residential and commercial. The city recognizes that there may be concerns with the loss of smaller commercial spaces and associated economic opportunities. And as we further evaluate impacts, staff will be looking at how the zoning districts may be designed to ensure that we maintain a supply of small business space while allowing additional residential development. In this particular area here, it is very close to downtown, it is close to transit, and there's a lot of benefits with allowing additional residential development that may be consistent with some of the newer apartment complexes, such as Radius, that's right across the street from this area. Next slide, please. Another optional strategy is increasing housing in areas where it's already permitted. Here, we highlighted Woodside Road. Woodside Road has a wide variety of different types of zoning districts. And what we would do is look at consistency, increasing higher densities along Woodside Road to allow for new housing. There was concerns that we heard from the community and from commission about the appropriateness of Woodside Road. While it does have transit access, it is also a heavy, heavily used by vehicles and may feel unsafe for bike and ped. Staff is coordinating with the current Walk, Bike, Thrive, Bicycle and Ped Access Plan to ensure that new walking and biking facilities in these new residential areas will occur. And in addition to Woodside Road, which is the map that's on your screen, we'll also be looking at increasing the allowance of residential uses in our downtown precise-plan area and looking at potentially increasing the densities in our current mixed-use corridor areas, such as along El Camino and in other sections of Broadway. These this collection of strategies would help increase by incrementally development in areas that already have residential development or would create new opportunities for residential development to occur slowly over time. These types of strategies will help us reach our more aggressive RENA targets of 150% RENA and also provide just more opportunities for housing approvals and places where people of all income levels can live. Next slide, please. To summarize, staff is recommending setting a target of 150% of the RENA. We have actually heard from our commission and committee that if possible, to go even higher than 150%, in large part to mitigate any concerns with the jobs-housing imbalance. At this time, staff is continuing to recommend 150%, but I list that as a discussion point. The next is establishing strategies for locating housing in high opportunity areas. As I mentioned before, with our missing middle strategy, allowing some incremental residential development in existing residential neighborhoods through ADUs and through our SB9. And in addition, some of the Woodside Road rezoning will actually touch some of the more high resource opportunity areas that are delineated on that map. Staff is also recommending, based on Planning Commission input, that we could create an implementation program to look at studying even further additional residential densities in some single-family zone neighborhoods. This would take intensive work and discussion with the community, and we would want to make sure that we don't rush that. So at this point, we're not proposing to do that now, but to put it as an implementation program, so after the housing element is adopted, we can start that study with the residential neighborhoods. And last, in terms of studying additional rezoning strategies, staff is recommending zoning changes along Veterans and along Woodside with opportunities for additional density in our existing mixed-use zoning district areas as well as our downtown. We think that all these strategies together collectively will get us where we need to be in new housing. I would like to note quickly that staff is not recommending a strategy along Bay Road. Staff had discussed that with the Planning Commission back in October. But due to some additional information that we've received, we're no longer proposing that at this time. We think the collection of the other strategies that we've already discussed will be plenty in terms of meeting our 150% RENA target. Next slide, please. So what we would do with the information received today is we would finalize our recommended strategies that we would study further. We would start an environmental impact review process in January of next year. And we would also return to Planning Commission, HHCC, and the City Council in early spring to discuss further goals, policies, and programs that would further complement these strategies. The draft element would need to be reviewed by the state, and we would continue public outreach throughout this process. And we are looking for final review and adoption in late fall of 2022. Next slide. So I would like to conclude with the questions that Mr. Munzer had mentioned. In terms of these are the areas, we would appreciate council feedback. Thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Odell and Mr. Munzer. I really appreciate it. Very good presentation. So now we're going to have council discussion. Council may ask any questions and have a discussion, and then we will follow that with public comment. So who would like to begin first? Council member ready?
Thank you so much, Mayor Howard. And this was a great report. Thank you so much for the time and effort that went into this report. And I know full well from previous housing elements, the work that goes into preparing for it. And part of that is my question. What now what mechanism do you use to determine what our various populations are? How do you determine what is needed? What how what kind of housing is needed? Was that not clear?
That was. No, I can start with the answer to that. Thank you. That's a good question. For this housing element cycle, we actually partner through 21 Elements and work with a consulting firm that helps develop all of that information based on the most recent data that we can find in terms of the different populations. And as you know, the housing element requirements stipulate that we need to know certain things about how many single-headed households do we have? What's the ethnicity breakdown? What types of units do we have in the community? And all of that information needs to be pulled together as part of, you know, the background information in terms of what needs do we need to meet for this upcoming housing element cycle?
Thank you very much. And I think it's important for the public to hear that, that the that you take into consideration the various income levels, the whether how many people are disabled. I mean, it's really very finite, the information that goes into this analysis. So given that, I understand that the state has uses only the categories of very low, low, and moderate. And and those were the ones that were listed. But I also understand that staff will be including ELI, extremely low income, in when we are seeking units. And so even though the state is asking for one thing, I'm wondering, when you're making these public reports, if you could include the percentage of ELI that you will be looking for in the next housing element, if that's relevant?
Thank you, council member ready. Yes, as part of our annual housing reporting requirements, we are actually required to evaluate and state whether or not a unit is extremely low income. And also, I think this will be an important discussion point for the goals, policies, and implementation programs if the city wants to set an additional policy about prioritizing extremely low-income units.
Okay, thank you. So that would require an additional policies and conversation. I guess that's what I needed to hear. Thank you so much. This is really wonderful work.
Thank you, council member ready. Council member Aguirre?
Thank you, Diana, for that presentation. It was very clear and very creative. But one of my questions is, what are the benefits of 150% RENA or even higher that was proposed?
There's a couple benefits. One is something is new this cycle. It's called no net loss. So at the beginning of an eight-year period, the city plans for all the different sites that together will collectively add up to the RENA, which in this case is around 4,600. The challenge is that there's new rules now that says if one of those sites were to develop at a less at less than the density that we had expected, well, then we're below our 4,600. Then we don't have enough sites on the books to accommodate all of the remaining RENA. So then, the current law says that you would have to go out and you'd have to proactively rezone or identify an additional site so you can maintain the planning for that entire amount. The good news is if we go above and beyond right in the beginning, we don't have to make those individual choices every time a housing opportunity site is approved. We would have a much larger plan that would give us a lot more flexibility in terms of how housing could be developed. And it would also just provide additional opportunities for housing to be built in the city.
Does it improve our RENA goals for the next year? In other words, if we go 150%, will we have less goals the next year from the state?
That's a very good question. I don't believe so, the way it's set up right now. For example, our current RENA cycle, we will actually go above and beyond in terms of certain numbers of units. But my understanding is those do not count. We didn't we do not get credit for the next cycle. So that is a drawback is that it won't, as far as we know right now, this would not affect a future RENA cycle that starts in 2030.
Okay, thank you. That, yeah, I was wondering if we get brownie points as we move forward. So are we, as we look at all of these areas that were proposed, how would you set priorities? Has as in your discussions with all the community groups and the commissions and boards, how are they setting priorities on which ones to look at first?
Thank you. That's a really good question. A couple things. I think that it's important for us to consider making sure that we're distributing housing evenly throughout the community. I will say that we did hear a lot of support from different community groups about missing middle housing as being a really effective way of doing that. And then SB9, of course, takes that one additional step further by allowing that type of housing in even single-family zone, which wasn't what the what city staff was initially talking about. The issue is that that provides a lot of good incremental growth, but it may not get us a lot of units at one time. The bulk of our units have come in downtown for the last cycle. So what we're trying to do is balance the types of housing. We definitely hear a lot of community support for the lower density infill in residential neighborhoods. Though I do want to want to point out that we have also heard some concerns. This can be disruptive to existing residential neighborhoods to see that kind of change occur. So there's a little bit of a balance there. But I do believe that the other way to balance is to find a great mix, to have some strategies that address housing in all of our different residential neighborhoods, as well as getting a lot of really dense housing next to our transit in ways that reduce traffic and greenhouse gases.
So given that response, are there areas in our city that are most desirable and some that are least desirable?
Downtown, as you have seen, has been a very desirable place to develop housing. You can we've seen less parking in some of those developments because people can use Caltrain, they can hop on a bus, they can walk to the grocery store, they can walk to restaurants. So I think that that has been a really important source of housing, and we'll continue to see that along El Camino real, as we've seen with some of the more recent developments around South Main. So I think, however, though, when we're talking about the optional strategies, I think the areas along Veterans Boulevard are very close to downtown, have a lot of the same benefits, and could be a really a new way to add housing to the city.
Thank you, Diana. And as I hear all your responses and in the report, I think what I'm hearing is we're looking for areas where we can have a bigger impact throughout the city and to balance the needs and also the neighborhoods. And when I'm talking about neighborhoods, I'm talking about the areas that you presented, whether it's Woodside, El Camino, Veterans, and all of the different spots and perhaps spreading it out, but also thinking about transit and traffic and safety. I know, for example, when I think of Woodside, I think of Jefferson and the challenges of having children crossing the streets, you know, youth and moving back and forth to the schools that are on opposite sides. Same thing would happen if it were Woodside. So those are all important factors to consider. So thank you for the report.
Thank you, council member Aguirre. I saw council member Smith's hand up, and now I do not. Would any other council members like to be next to speak? Council member G?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. I'll fill time for council member Smith to come back. Diana, can we go back a little bit? Great presentation. If I recall, Redwood City has not always had a housing element submitted. So what are the consequences of not doing one?
Briefly, the consequences are that there is a loss in terms of how the city may approve developments. There's been a lot of work at the state to streamline housing approvals. In such a case that if you don't meet certain criteria, certain projects need to be approved by right. That can be one of the consequences of us not certifying a housing element. There are also other consequences that could occur that we lose out on funding opportunities. Are the two of the primary ways?
So we don't do one. Development by right could be a consequence, or the state could step in a little harder, I guess. And it looks like our city attorney wants to amplify the answer to that.
Ms. Ramirez?
Thank you. And Ms. Odell actually answered it, but I did want to clarify that. Council member G, you're correct that the city in the past hasn't always submitted a housing element. As a charter city, we felt like, and I actually wasn't here during that time, but charter cities felt like they didn't have to comply with certain portions. And really, in recent years, it's become very clear that charter cities must comply with all of the housing element and annual updates. And so the repercussions and the consequences have become more serious for us, as well as general law cities.
Thank you for helping clarify that because I do remember we didn't, as a city, we never, it was always not, we don't then always have one. So it was helpful to have that clarified. And as you talk about one of the rezoning strategies to for, I think it was increasing density or at least cleaning up some of our zoning to allow duplexes and triplexes and I guess quadplexes or fourplexes. I didn't hear any reference to building codes and fire codes that may be obstacles to some of that happening. Is there a role for, for example, our Board of Building Review to be a part of this process? So if they can, if they identify obstacles, they can work on code amendments to help make whatever is approved actionable?
Yes, that is absolutely a possibility. The city, the city's housing consultant is currently drafting the constraints analysis, which can do things like that, can identify that there are building code or fire code requirements that are standing in the way, certain types of housing. And when we have that information as part of our goals and policies, we can implement, okay, these are some steps that we'd like to take to alleviate that burden. And that would be a good role in that.
I think that would be great to get them involved because most often, maybe not most often, often when there's a zoning change or zoning map, the other codes don't keep up, and all of a sudden, it's not actionable, or they become barriers to things happening. So I think having those constraints identified and getting the Board of Building Review involved So I think having those constraints identified and getting the Board of Building Review involved and being proactive rather than being a barrier would be very helpful. How does this, how do we coordinate our housing element with our neighboring cities like San Carlos or, you know, Menlo Park to the south? How, how does that all work?
Well, there's a couple things. We've been working very closely together as part of the 21 Elements Collaborative, which is a voluntary partnership of all the jurisdictions within San Mateo County. We get together regularly to talk about policy issues and challenges that all of us face as part of the region. We have been sharing resources and public outreach, sharing ideas about new policies, process and techniques to address some of our housing needs. And we've also been getting together and, and having listening sessions with various housing providers to also tell, to hear what types of needs is in the community. So from that standpoint, we do, we do collectively look at aspects like that as a group.
Very good because I think part of the problem we find ourselves in in 2021 is not everybody's done their fair share. And now the state has stepped in pretty hard to make sure everyone tries to do their fair share. But it's hard to make up for decades of not doing as much as everyone should have. The last thing I, I want to share is you mentioned downtown as an attractive place for developing housing. Does that create an opportunity to reduce parking minimums? Because I think we've experienced, you know, people that work and live downtown have relied on other ways of moving around. And so is that an opportunity to do at least maybe a pilot program to reduce parking minimums to create more housing instead?
That is something we absolutely can look at. I know that we have recently been surveying some of the existing residential apartment complexes near Franklin, just to see how, how they're using their parking. Are there, are there vacant spaces? Many of those projects have unbundled parking, which means that they, you rent a space separately from the unit. How are those policies working out? So we're in the midst of studying that and that is an opportunity for us to further encourage housing.
Very good. So with regard to the three questions, whoops, I'm sorry, Mr. Munzer.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, that's okay. Mr. Munzer, I see your hand raised. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to mention that we are studying parking reductions as part of the downtown precise plan amendments connected with the, with the development projects we have in the, in the DTPP. So it is not, it's happening now. It's being studied.
Great, thank you. So with regard to the three questions, I would support going beyond 100% Rena goal. Whether it's 150, 165, I'm going to rely on staff because I think going more than the hundred gives greater flexibility. And with the state law about no net loss, we need that flexibility to make sure we are positioned to do the best we can. With regard to rezoning strategies, making sure our Board of Building Review, fire code and building codes keep up as well as studying whether it's the downtown precise plan or the transit district reducing parking minimums. You know, I think everything has been great in the report. So thank you very much for all the hard work. And I know we're still in the very beginning of this. And hopefully, community outreach will bring more people engagement to participate in the housing element. Thank you, Mayor Howard.
Thank you, Councilmember G. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. I also, I think I heard your, you call my name earlier. I just stepped away and just take a quick bio break. So I appreciate the consideration there.
No problem, no problem.
Of course, of course. Well, I, I'm really excited to be talking about this topic. Of course, this is going to set the stage for housing and to a greater extent, development conversations for our community for, you know, the better part of a decade. And so I'm really excited to be as rigorous as possible in the consideration of all options as we pursue achieving our Rena goals. And so with that in mind, I do have a few questions on, well, number of elements of the staff report. And I'd like to start out with understanding the kind of outreach process that was developed within the context of these recommendations. So obviously I saw that there was a bit of a skew in terms of the survey respondent, which is significant to me, especially considering, I think, the general trajectory of the recommendations that are being set out in the staff report. So I'm kind of wondering, what does the staff have an opinion about the robustness, for lack of a better term, that the outreach process was able to achieve? What could we do better? And then I'll have a, a bit of a follow-up question to that if some, if, if someone can kind of raise that or answer that question.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. To briefly summarize, you know, many of our workshops and the overall thrust of some of the electronic surveys, we are still, tend to not include as many Spanish language community members as we were hoping. And they also tended to be, respondents tended to be older. And that's one of the reasons why we took that special effort to really reach out to various stakeholder groups that represented other community residents to hear from them. We did take that special effort to reach out to teens to, to make sure that we provided our language and our materials in both English and Spanish. And we're always working to, to go do more. If we could really quickly just go back to the outreach slide, I think that was slide five or six. Please? Thank you. That will help. And one of the things that we are doing, that we'll be doing the first week of December is we're having a Spanish language focus group to talk additionally, not only about housing policies, but also to talk about environmental justice policies. So we're always striving to do more to, to reach out to the various communities within Redwood City.
Thank you. So I, I can kind of take that to say that we're still learning and that, you know, the outcome of the public input process is still a work in progress. And there's something of a follow-up question that I have there. In terms of the questions that were asked in the survey, were there any questions asked about the rezone, active rezoning of R1, perhaps in non-transit oriented areas?
Yes, there was. Actually, can you advance forward one more slide? Please? Thank you. This has the workshops. So a couple of points, yes, at both, some of our community workshops and at the Planning Commission and HHCC Joint Study Session, we heard questions and comments about possibly looking at R1, which is single-family zoned areas, and zoning it to allow for additional housing, whether it be along Alameda de los Pulgas or some, some other street within the city. And for that reason, staff is recommending an implementation program to study that further, that there can be additional opportunities for housing in those neighborhoods. I see that Mr. Munzer has his hand up.
I, good evening, Councilmember Smith. I would read, read what Diana just said. The one point I did want to make previously that you had been, that you had pointed out is that we do need to do a better job. Clearly, the breakdown of survey respondents between homeowners and renters. We need a larger response rate from renters because the demographic of the city is such as that it's a much more even split than what was represented in that survey. And that's one of the things we're going to be working harder towards to make sure that, that we're getting as much outreach as we can to renters as we are to homeowners.
I appreciate that point. Thank you so much, Mr. Munzer. Just one final follow-up question about the community outreach. So just in terms of quantitative assessment of interest in the rezoning of R1, and I guess specifically that would be the survey as opposed to like community sessions, which are, you know, you know, basically, you know, qualitative on its, on its face. You know, were there any other quantitative measures of interest in, in kind of the rezoning of R1 in the city that you can point to?
If I may, there, there weren't any quantitative measurements. I will say that in the site strategy workshop that we had in September, we heard comments from community members asking about that, that zoning action. We also have, as I mentioned, heard it at our joint study session and in occasional other groups. But we don't have a quantitative way of sort of categorizing what, what types of comments we heard in terms of that particular strategy.
All right. Okay. Thanks a lot. So I'll move on to the second line of questioning that I have. This is about the development pipeline that you pointed out in the staff report. So does that have a quick question about the development pipeline in reference to our understanding of our ability to achieve 150% of Rena? So I assume this presumes that 100% of the projects in the development pipeline are approved. Is that correct? And then second to that, why are we making that assumption? Look, where does that, okay, yeah, any clarification there would be great.
Yes, thank you. We're not assuming that we approve all, all of the pipeline projects. And that's one of the big reasons why we are suggesting that we go to 150% because we want to allow the city that flexibility to decide what projects are right, what makes sense, you know, with all the project benefits and the development review. When we identify a housing opportunity site, what we're doing is we're saying it's zoned appropriately and there's a certain amount of interest in having that site be developed, right? It has a certain likelihood of development. The great thing about having an application in-house is it's very easy to communicate to the state and say, yes, we, we have interest in this site because we have an application. So it, it provides that, but it is not 100%. We're not banking on every single unit and that's why we want to go above and beyond.
So how many, and maybe this is written in the staff report and I just, you know, I'm forgetting that I, that I read through it. What percentage of the development projects and pipeline are expected to reach 100% of Rena? Do we, do we, do we know that answer?
We have not done that final analysis. We're still doing some additional research on the site strategies to see what the potential for those development would be, which sites look attractive. So I don't have a final number for you on that.
Got it. I would love to see that for sure. Definitely 100, at 100% of Rena, maybe 125% and 150% of Rena as well. I have another question on Rena and the development pipeline. So obviously, many of the projects in the development pipeline include some kind of commercial square footage development, which obviously then yields to, in theory, a greater demand for housing within obviously our city and within the region as well. So is that taken into account with this Rena allocation that we're currently sitting with? Or not? So I mean, I guess what I'm trying to say is that if we were to approve, let's say anywhere from 75 to 90% of the developments that are in pipeline, including those that include commercial square footage development, where does that net us out in terms of the basically net new development of residential housing in reference to this current Rena allocation? Hopefully, that's a clear question. Not sure if it makes sense, but I guess what I'm saying is that there's going to be additional demand created with the, with the development of commercial square footage. I don't believe that it's included in this current Rena number. And I just want to make sure that I'm correct in that assessment.
Rena number that we were given by the state is intended to address the jobs housing balance that existed on the ground when they developed the methodology. So that was two, you know, a year, a year ago or so. I will state that the city does have, excuse me, does have an ordinance to mitigate the impacts of the residential demand. So we have an, a requirement that either commercial projects pay an affordable housing impact fee or to provide housing as well. So we do have sort of a jurisdiction level way of addressing some of those impacts. And then I, I think that what we'll have to do is look at the next cycle of Rena to see what additional housing we need to provide. Again, I think one of the reasons why staff is recommending this aggressive target is to address some of those exact concerns. If we're allowing additional jobs and housing, are we allowing also, or additional jobs? Are we also allowing additional housing? And our, the hope is our, with our answer would be yes.
Okay. Yeah. Again, love to see more detail there because I think that principally there are, there, there's interest in that kind of balancing act, let's call it, as we move forward with the consideration of developments and pipeline as well as this Rena allocation number. It may not have direct implication on Rena as it has been a portion to us today. But I think that in the spirit of Rena, I, I would imagine we would want to consider what that ultimate, you know, outcome looks like in reference to the commercial development, square footage in the pipeline at the moment. So I just wanted to move on a little bit to my final kind of slate of questions, which is around equity in terms of zoning. So, you know, I, I have a kind of understanding, I think, of kind of the positioning of the city, the philosophical positioning of the city in reference to how you're thinking about the kind of rezoning rationale. I guess my question here is, you know, what, when I think about the areas of kind of zoning harmonization that you've put forward, I think of existing areas that are very high density. You know, to certain extent, areas that are lower socioeconomically resourced. And and those are really the two kind of most important factors in my mind. I'm kind of wondering, you know, in thinking about those, those elements from an equity perspective, had we thought about other areas that were of lower density that potentially had higher kind of socioeconomic advantage within the city and thinking about what a potential rezoning strategy could look like? And I'm particularly interested in R1 and specifically R1 in areas that, you know, would not necessarily kind of run under the rubric that you just mentioned in the staff report.
A couple of things, and then I might want to just have Mr. Munzer also mention that. So I think that when we were looking at areas where we could add housing, we thought, you know, and in the midst of this, you have SB nine occurred. So we already have a law where we can allow duplexes on every single-family lot within certain parameters. We have the missing middle, which will also increase the density in fairly large sections of residential, existing residential neighborhoods. I think staff's thought, and on top of that, we also have been allowing accessory dwelling units, which has been a pretty significant way to increase units. I think what we were thinking is those three strategies together do a lot. It, it would put us in a very different place than we were four or five years ago in terms of how much housing we're adding in existing single-family neighborhoods. There may be areas where it makes sense in terms of having the infrastructure to support additional density. But we do want to take the time and make sure we do it right. And I think that's the reason why at this time, we didn't want to just circle some properties on a map and say, let's go. We really wanted to spend a little bit more time with the community, thinking through and making sure we understood all the issues. I'll ask for Mr. Munzer to jump in if he has any additional comments on that.
All right. Thank you, Diana. I agree with all of that. I do want to, Diana is such an excellent resource for us. She is our housing element go-to person. I'm just so pleased to have, excuse me, have her on our team. Yeah, I agree with that. And, and Councilmember Smith, SB nine did enter into the, you know, conversation as this was all transpiring and community outreach. The report identifies what Diana just said, that between, you know, figuring out what the implications are of SB nine, the ADU production numbers that we are so gladly seeing increased so highly, and then including this as an implementation program as part of the housing element to look at the R1 areas in the future. And once, you know, that's will be 2023. So we will have a year or so under our belt. We'll see if our ADU production stays where it's at and we'll see what the interest is on SB nine. And as we start to get that data, we'll be able to have a, a larger conversation. The other thing I would mention is, you know, some of our, some fairly major corridors are zoned R1. So parts of Jefferson, parts of Alameda de los Pulgas, you know, so is it being more strategic about it because those areas may have access to transportation corridors? Or is it a larger conversation? So those are all the So those are all the things that, you know, um, we hope to start having a conversation about in the future.
Okay, yeah, I'll just uh kind of round out on my line of question with a few comments. Um, so I imagine that you can, you can see based on on what I've said, um, and the questions that I just asked, um, I'm questioning the comprehensiveness of this this strategy that frankly that we're we're being asked to consider tonight. I do think that there are some interesting elements and some elements that could be effective in reaching our Rena numbers. I have questions about, again, um, what kind of our Rena goal attainment means in reference to the current development pipeline, as I mentioned in the question that I have. Um, but my question about the comprehensiveness is really um about, um, I think the lack of fulsomeness that we're using and and considering um rezoning, upzoning of R one in an active way, even separate and apart from the measure that S B nine is going to kind of give us. And as you've all said already, we have no idea what that means in terms of our ability to meet Rena. Um, as I mentioned in my kind of last line of questioning, I do think that um, considering zoning harmonization among transit corridors while on its face is interesting um and uh potentially effective, I think, has potentially follow-on effects to communities in our in our city that are historically at risk, potentially more vulnerable than others. And I see this as more of kind of protecting R one zoning, frankly. Um, whether or not that's a popular thing to say, I don't know. I mean, again, I think our outreach has yet to bear that fruit, um, to be quite honest with you. But I think that we really need to be thinking about which areas of the city that are historically zoned R one that have been historically protected from um essentially kind of participating in the fair share conversation around meeting the needs of this housing crisis is happening. And so I really want, uh, I I really, really want to urge city staff to be thinking about that, coming back potentially to thinking about areas of the city that are zoned R one. Not necessarily circling um R one sections on a map, but coming up with a rigorous framework that we can use to decide which R one areas um are of potential. And like having a serious conversation right now, uh, unfortunately, right now, I don't think that that conversation is on the table. So those are my comments. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Vice Mayor Hale.
For some reason, I've disappeared. So bizarre. Well, let me see here. Um, let's see if this works. There you go. The mysteries of Zoom. Okay, uh, thank you so much. Um, and to my colleagues, uh, such wonderful comments. Um, I only have a few to offer. Um, so first of all, um, if we go back to slide seven on the engagement, I think the the piece that I don't see here, and maybe Ms. Odell, you could speak to it, is was there any outreach done to what I wouldn't quite term teens, but more young adults? So um individuals who are perhaps in our community colleges or, you know, living at home and going to school but unable to move out.
It's a very good question, and it's a very good target demographic, but we did not have any specific outreach to reach that particular community. Again, we sort of rely heavily on social media um and and some of the city's apparatus for that, uh, but we didn't have a group that we attended.
Well, if there's any opportunity to do additional outreach, I think that's a really key demographic to talk to you because these are the individuals who uh very soon will find that they're not going to be able to live in the um, in the city that they grew up in. Um, I think for teens, and I've talked with a lot of teens about this, trying to get them involved in a housing element, um, which was difficult, uh, but it still feels very far away, the idea of college, the idea of graduating from college, the idea of what you'll do after college. Uh, but for those individuals, and I know we have wonderful relationships with, for example, Camyada College, and so that might be a good place to start. Um, you know, they're they're at the precipice of having to make some real hardcore life decisions about where they're going to be able to afford to live based on the uh, the um, the work uh that they do. I think um other stakeholders that might be interesting to connect with, again, assuming we still have a window of opportunity for engagement, would be our teachers and our schools, um, because these are often the folks who, um, it was a starting salary for Redwood City School District puts you at the very low income uh housing level. So very key roles in our community that we need in our community to function are housing insecure. And so I would love to see us target those groups in particular. Another one that comes to mind would be reaching out to One Life Counseling or Star Vista, as we know from attempting to recruit for uh mental health workers for our own um pilot program on policing that was very difficult. And in my conversations with those groups, uh, what they're telling me is that we have a dire shortage of mental health workers in our county because of housing. So if we could, um, versus the broad outreach, maybe connect with some of these organizations who are vital to our community, but for whom housing is a real um deterrent to providing service. I think we might be able to get some of the additional types of feedback that we were looking for. And and I think those would be really great sources to go to. So that's one. Um, and then the second, the second uh suggestion I wanted to make, and then I can get to your questions. So feel free to go back to the question slide is, how are we thinking about operationalizing this? You know, this is a big number, and most certainly, you know, your develop, your department tracks it. Um, you know, thinking about my, you know, three years on council, I don't know that I've seen the number come to us that many times in terms of where are we so far headed towards this number? I I would love to hear your thoughts on that, and then I might offer some suggestions as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. Those are, those are really good questions. How do we, how do we even produce that much housing in eight years? If Miami be clear, that's that's what your question is by operationalized?
No, so what I'm thinking more of is we see so many projects throughout the year. And it might be helpful to look through the lens of how is this contributing to or moving us away from achieving these goals? And I see Mr. Munzer has his hand up, so perhaps he has something to say.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Hale. So we are working on some uh development dashboards uh that we are going to be able to share uh with the council and certainly with community and make those public facing. And a lot of that could start to go to uh tracking this, if you will, in terms of our progress. So I think that may be one way that uh it's very visual, um, that we're really, we're trying to work out the the draft versions right now. Is that what you were seeking? And I also did want to mention that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, please.
I I think it's an excellent idea about the folks that are, you know, eh eh in college, about to graduate college and, you know, how you reach out to them because it's clearly so important to keep them in the community now, because if they go, um, you know, they they may not have the opportunity to return. So thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you for hearing it. Uh, so I I love hearing that there's going to be some sort of tracking mechanism. Um, but I'd love to see, I personally would love to see this even integrated into staff reports when we look at a project. Um, and and the reason is because it's certainly not, you know, the only factor that goes into making a decision, but it could help us get a high-level view on how we are tracking, not only to the overall number, but to each individual goal. So, for example, if we are very far behind on low or moderate, that might make us, that might put us into a different negotiating position with the developer to go after those units so that we can be sure we're hitting the right mix for the community versus taking what is offered and constantly having that eye on how are we going to get there? How are we going to meet these needs? Um, so I, for one, would love to see that. I think it would be really instrumental in making and having better, more strategic negotiating conversations uh with developers.
Think that's an excellent idea. Thank you very much.
Great. So, um, yeah, in terms of the questions, very much agree with my colleagues here. Uh, I agree with a hundred and fifty percent. Uh, I'm gonna have to go back now and watch the Planning Commission meeting to see the discussion on more than a hundred and fifty percent. That's interesting. Uh, but generally feeling, I think that buffer room is important um so that we can have the flexibility. Um, the rezoning strategies, I feel like we have some new tools now with S B nine um to to allow duplexes in the neighborhoods. And that is certainly something similar to A D Us that we have heard from residents for a long time. And I do know that the H H C C and Planning Commission were working on a slightly different version of that, but that overall there has been a strong desire for missing middle housing throughout the community. Um, and I think that's a really important one uh to hit. And and then finally, um, other rezoning or alternative strategies to consider. I think, you know, we need as many strategies. This is a layered approach, right? We need not one silver bullet. We need many strategies. We don't know where the economy goes. We don't know what happens with our transit district. Um, and so all of these factors will make um developing in certain parts of the city more or less desirable. And we need to stay nimble um so that we can meet these needs. And I wanted to make a comment on a question that was posed earlier about hitting our goals and would we get credit later? And just to say that my understanding from this Rena process was that our our number actually did come down because previously Redwood City had higher numbers. But because of uh anchoring to these opportunity zones, many of our neighbors who previously weren't tasked with building housing now are tasked with building housing on much greater levels. So it has created a little bit better balance, um, even though the numbers are still so big. But I just wanted to point that out because we're not alone um in receiving these these assignments. And I think that's really important um that the community know that, um, that we're not singled out for some reason. Um, you know, Atherton, Menlo Park, Hillsborough, Portola Valley, they're all going to have to produce housing, and they're having very similar conversations to this one right now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Um, thanks, folks, for the presentation. I would agree with most of my councilmembers' comments. Um, I, for the first question, I'm looking over here because I also am using two screens. Um, and so I would agree with the targeting of a hundred fifty Rena. I think it's good for concept, easier to conceptualize. Um, and I would say that, you know, I I would say this is a pretty conservative look at our arena, our, at our rezoning. Yeah, I was hoping to see a lot more um pink, you know, and um purple in the maps. I'm talking about the the first strategy that was presented as an example, also in our slide, but, you know, to to um folks in our workshop, because, because of S B nine, you know? And I don't think, you know, uh, so I think I heard from the line of questions um, uh, Councilmember Smith made that, uh, you know, it seemed uh easiest to to get to guarantee or more likely to guarantee like development along Woodside Road, for example, and that's why that's kind of highlighted, I think. Is that correct? Um, you can interject if that's so, because I'm just trying to recall some of the answers or questions, so the answers that were um given to that.
Uh, really quickly, so we were looking at Woodside Road for rezoning for quite a long stretch. And part of it is because of its proximity to transit, and part of it is because it's in areas that are closer to higher, higher resource neighborhoods.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, yeah. So I would definitely like to see it go past, like, I guess, a little, like, north of, not a little, but, you know, it seems to cut off around Roosevelt Avenue. Um, and I think we just have to expand that scale a lot larger. Essentially, I don't think there should be any pockets of great wealth or deep poverty either. Like, we're trying to eliminate pockets of poverty, but we should also eliminate pockets of great wealth. Um, so, you know, we should send that over to Atherton, right? But, but like, um, I would like us to to expand um our locations for zoning because I don't want S B nine to be the root for us. Um, and, you know, something along Whipple could be fine. You know, I just don't want to be the only focus is um that is by transit, because, yes, we want it uh centered to transit, of course. Um, but there is just so much, uh, you know, pockets of wealth I, you know, in these, in these areas um that weren't highlighted, that aren't eligible for rezoning purposes. So I think they ought to be looked at for sure, um, because they have in the Berkeley figure, I think it's like figure two, I don't remember what page it is exactly. But like the part that isn't lit up pink in our strategy map is lit up green, which is like high resource area. So, you know, maybe it's not like right by Sequoia Station, but it's a really high resource area. So I would love to see that be expanded over there. You know, they'd also have access to parts, you know, greener spaces. I think those are just as important. Um, so I would love to see that um and these opportunities, so not just eliminating pockets of poverty, but eliminating pockets of wealth. And um, I guess I would also just like to comment, um, I was also disappointed to see the turnout of respondents, about like sixty-six or so for renters, and only seventeen were Spanish-speaking. And a lot of my residents in my district are, um, you know, speak Spanish better than English. So I would love to hear more about thoughts, uh, like ways to get creative on partnerships because I did ask this question of um our city manager, uh, Stevenson Diaz. And, you know, we've been partnering a lot with with uh groups like Casa Circulo Cultural, and um we have Redwood City together. Um, and it seems that perhaps there may be like limited capacity for for relatively few members to respond to every committee for transportation for all of this. So I'd be curious to see if there could be more um documenting of also like why we didn't have more of these participants or like, oh, we reached out to Casa Circulo Cultural and they could not, you know, do this. Um, or something like that, because, yeah, I think this is a very skewed data, right, on 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 what are community values, right? So there is certainly a lot of responses, but it's definitely skewed towards homeowners. Um, so I would just love for us to get more creative and partnerships. I appreciate um what Vice Mayor said about folks who are young adults and reaching out to them. We should form a union, you know? Those of us who live at home and are got professional degrees should form a union. Um, uh, but yeah, I just would hope that we can get more creative, working with maybe schools as well and getting responses. Um, jobs. I wonder if unions could help, like, you know, local unions could get the word out. Um, I I'm just thinking of like a canvassing line, you know, like, what if we went door to door? Like, how many people would we need to hire? You know, do we need to hire people at all by chance? Like, I know a lot of this is, you know, we we find grants and stuff for CBOs, but, you know, maybe looking into hiring people who could, if they're like run a workshop in Spanish or bilingual, um, or whatever necessary language, you know? Uh, that's kind of what I'm hoping to see. I'm hoping to see more proportional representation in our elements, even though we will see a lot of, you know, responses from groups that Faith and Action bring out. Um, a lot of the immigrant population will be, you know, accounted for in our anti-displacement plan, plan. And that's really important, and I really appreciate that. But, you know, I'm hoping that it's more systemic and we think about, you know, detailing what what is impending or like what isn't working, I guess, um, in our notes and our staff reports, just so there's like an idea and not just like, yeah, and just seventeen percent of respondents, or not seventeen percent, seventeen respondents were Spanish-speaking. Like, just going into more detail as to why they're skewed um rather than just like letting the information show itself. Um, those are my biggest things. I'm curious about, I think I'll just leave it at that. I think Councilmember G mentioned something about parking requirements, right? And I think they must have covered it. Okay, great. Um, yeah, because limiting, yeah, because parking requirements are very expensive. And so if we can try and like bypass all that, that'd be great. Um, so, yeah, I just wanted to see more expansive rezoning and upzoning of our current residences to not just be around like Woodside Road and all that stuff, but like in very highly uh resource areas that are pockets of wealth. That is all. Thank you.
Mr. Munzer, you had your hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Thank you, Councilmember Espinoza Garnica. Um, we hear you. Uh, we will do a better job. We are planning um focus groups with uh Spanish-speaking organizations and community groups. Um, we, um, as I mentioned before, we recognize we can do a better job in terms of reading, uh, reaching uh renters. So we intend to do that. I do want to address your one comment. Sometimes we don't know why, um, why why we weren't more successful. We we put our best efforts into it and thought we were being comprehensive. So it's more important for us to learn on how to do better and how to do more and more comprehensive outreach than it's more and more comprehensive outreach than it's sometimes we just don't know. And that's sometimes why it's just in the staff report. But that's why we're looking for your input in terms of ideas and strategies so that we can up those responses from, from those community members.
Thank you, Mr. Munzer. Councilmember Smith, did you just not, did you want your hand raised to?
Nope. Thank you for calling that out. It was just left up by mistake.
Okay. And Mr. Munzer, you have your hand raised. Did you want to add anything?
Sorry, I'll lower it.
Nope.
A screen issue, Mayor, sorry.
I don't want to miss anyone, that's all. Okay, so I'll address the questions. I have to say, my colleagues, it's been a really pretty robust conversation and I hope that's been helpful to our city staff. I agree with targeting 150% of Rena goal. I don't see any downside to adopting a stretch goal. I, I just don't. It's, there's an upside that we would qualify possibly for newer funding that's becoming available. And I have no doubt that we're really going to try to reach 150%, but I appreciate that you've even presented this to us because I wasn't aware that we could even think like that, that there was a bonus for thinking outside the box and trying to do more. And especially since you don't want to have a net loss and get penalized, even though your intentions in the beginning were good. So I agree with number one, 150%. I had a question with that. I know that we're going to be doing a lot of work to reach that goal. Are we going to be able to use the ordinance that we passed not too long ago, giving preference for new housing to people who either live or work or live and work in our Redwood City community? So we can be assured that the housing that we are producing is actually going to people who live or work or both in Redwood City? Can we make that part of a condition of what we're doing? Because I think it's really important. We, we can't, you know, it's going to get discouraging if we attract people from other communities to come live here and we're not housing our own. So I'd like to be assured that what we're doing is going to benefit the community of Redwood City.
Yes, for affordable housing, we can implement the ordinance that we have adopted and have a preference for existing Redwood City residents.
And, and that would be most important, actually, the affordability nature. So thank you for clarifying that. I, I know that we have taken a little criticism for adopting that ordinance from surrounding cities. I said, well, why don't you adopt one too? I just feel it's important we take care of our community. The second question, are there additional rezoning strategies that should be? I think you've covered very carefully the strategies that you've recommended. I, I think this is an excellent report. It was very thorough, very clear. You teed up achievable strategies and you gave us a game plan we can work with. And it's not something that I feel is going to be rushed. It's, it's over time, so we can implement things and have time to implement things. We sometimes forget that if we do a lot of things all at once, maybe we get nothing done because we only have so many staff and so much time in the day. So doing something like this is much more achievable with a, hopefully, an end gain of success that we can really accomplish something here. So I would say the strategies are good. There are other alternatives to consider. I like the idea you're thinking mixed use because I do have concerns about losing more commercial areas without knowing the downside. And there will be downsides. I mean, the income from our community is so crucial. If we don't have commercial monies coming in, how will we replace that? So I think we have to be mindful of that and maybe mixed use is the answer along, especially Woodside Road and El Camino. You do something on the bottom, but up above you've got your housing and I think it's a nice marriage of the two. Let me see. I wanted to be sure that we're training our planning commission going forward because some of these changes are going to take training. So I want to be sure that they'll be assured that they will have the proper training as all of these steps are taking place, that they know how to utilize the new strategies that we're, we're coming up with here. Let me see. I had a question about preserving existing housing. Will that enter into it all? Is that just totally different? I, I know preserving existing housing is a big priority for us. And I wanted to be sure, can we count those numbers? Because if we don't preserve existing housing and keep it affordable for as long as we possibly can, we're losing major opportunities. I'd like to see we get credit for that. Has that been studied?
That will be a really important policy that we'll be looking at as part of the housing element on how to protect and identify what's called at-risk affordable units or units that would become non-affordable, would go back to market rate. The state law is pretty strict in terms of how many of the preserved units you can count towards your Rena. But that doesn't mean it's not a really important goal that we'll be focusing on early next year as part of the next set of discussions.
I agree. I wouldn't be surprised if we have many buildings that are at risk in Redwood City. And I'd like to be able to assure the community that we can count that and work on those and preserving them for the future. So I, I think I've answered your questions and I think council has answered, given you a lot of information and feedback. I see Councilmember Espinoza Garnica, if you have one last thing to say, because I really want to wrap this up. We have a heavy meeting tonight.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to, I heard your comment, Mayor, about wanting that more residents should be, should be folks who live here, but like in case that's not something that's measured yet or done yet. I know there is currently housing, or what is it, hiring first priorities? So like an EPA, people can, well, in EPA, it's required to hire more locals and businesses that they've had assistance being developed in the city. They have a whole website, you know, it's funded through Measure H-H, but they have a hiring local priority ordinance that could be a reverse.
Well, Ms. O'Dell just reminded me that we did pass an ordinance for affordable housing that we do give first preference to people who live, work, or both live and work in Redwood City. So I feel much more comfortable about that as we produce more housing units. So thank you for reminding me of that. Mr. Munzer?
Mayor Howard, real quick, and we can get more information too, but I believe the ordinance, the also covers displaced residents.
Exactly.
Part of it. So it's not just folks who live here, but people who've been displaced and then an opportunity to come back.
Exactly. And that's a real important piece. Thank you for including that. So my thanks again to the Planning Commission, Housing and Human Concerns, and our city staff. Wonderful, really, really good report, a lot to think about. So thank you very much. And so now we're going to, I'm going to turn it over to our city clerk, Ms. Aguilar, who's going to entertain public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Now is the time for public comment on item seven eight, the study session we just had onsite strategies for the housing element. If you would like to speak on this topic, please raise your hand now and keep your hand raised so that we could see how many speakers that we have. If you have joined us by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand and then you will press star six to unmute yourself when prompted. We'll give it a minute. Oh, thank you. Okay, so far we have four raised hands. Okay, we'll get started. Each speaker will have two minutes. The timer will start when you begin speaking. Our first speaker on this topic is Kalisha Webster and she will be followed by Chris Johnson. Welcome, Kalisha.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Howard and council members. My name is Kalisha Webster and I'm a housing advocate for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities with housing choices. Currently, less than 25% of the over 400 Redwood City residents with developmental disabilities have been able to transition into independent housing, not by choice, but because of the lack of affordable housing. Adults with developmental disabilities typically have fixed or extremely limited incomes, making them at increased risk of displacement or homelessness. By definition, they require supportive services from both formal service providers as well as informal support systems developed from having grown up in Redwood City. Housing instability, which can disrupt these supports, significantly increases harm to these residents. We appreciate that the city has shown a willingness to increase housing access for these extremely vulnerable members of the Redwood City community, such as at 1304 El Camino Real, where eight of the 39 units will be set aside for people with developmental disabilities who require coordinated supportive services from the regional center in order to maintain housing stability. While these units will provide more opportunities for people with developmental disabilities to live independently, the city, city still has a long way to go in meeting the housing needs of Redwood City residents with developmental disabilities. The use of public land for public good, such as redeveloping public park lots into affordable housing, increases financial feasibility projects which target deeper levels of affordability. The city could then further increase housing access by creating guidelines for the scoring of any competitive RFPs for city-owned land or housing funds, which grants additional points to projects that include a higher number of extremely low-income units or that make a percentage of units subject to a preference for certain special needs populations who benefit from coordinated onsite services. Development of un- affordable housing overlays on, which allows density bonuses above state law for developments which include more BMR units or deeply, deeper levels of affordability than are required by state law, also incentivizes more development of extremely low-income units.
Thank you. Thank you, Kalisha. Our next speaker is Chris Johnson. Chris will be followed by Mike Dunham. Welcome, Chris.
Good evening, city council members of the public. I'd like to start out by thanking the HHCC and the Planning Commission for all of the work that they have done on this issue. These are volunteers in our community and they have proven time and time again, they care about providing housing solutions for Redwood City. I also want to thank Principal Planner Diana O'Dell for having an incredible knack for boiling this dry topic to boiling it down for everyday residents to be able to understand. All this said, I don't understand why we are continuing to avoid the elephant in the room. We know what developers think about our zoning. We have seven million square feet of office space in the queue. So it really doesn't matter how many housing units we approve if the end result is, is that it continues to displace residents from Redwood City because we are continuing to approve millions of square feet of office space. And let's not be, let's not kid ourselves, impact fees only cover 20% of the true impact on our community. So impact fees are a token amount to the actual impact that exists in our community. So let me give you a real life example. 1125 Reguello was 100% housing until we rezoned that area of Redwood City. And now it's a 300,000 square foot office project with 33 units of housing. According to city staff, that site alone could provide housing for a 140 to 190 housing units. And instead, we have an office project proposed by a developer. Why should we be surprised? So I support any zoning that protects sites for housing. Any office project is an opportunity lost site for housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris, very much. Our next speaker is Mike Dunham. Mike will be followed by Roland.
Good evening, council and staff. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Mike Dunham. I'm a, I will live and work in Redwood City and I'm a lead with Peninsula for Everyone, which advocates for more equitable, sustainable communities. I really liked a lot of the comments I heard from council members tonight. I think ideas like removing parking minimums, taking a look at changes to city, R1 zoning citywide, and a lot of the other ideas I think are really important. I wanted to make a couple of points to, I was in a, I was in some of the public sessions and I commented at the Planning Commission and HAC, HHC joint session. And I think the interest in going above 150% of Rena is really to address what Mr. Johnson just, just flagged, the sort of enormous amount of office space in the pipeline. There was not necessarily a direct input into the Rena allocation process. If you do the math on seven million square feet of office space, divide that by about 250 square feet per worker and then say, you know, any given housing unit can have, cover about 1.5 jobs. You need 18,666 new homes just to balance that seven million square feet. And that is well above even 150% of Rena, which is why I think there's a lot of interest to go even higher. So I, I really think that's an important part of the discussion. I hope you all can encourage staff to go higher. The other thing I'd like to give a plug on is an affordable housing overlay citywide. I think one of the things we really should be doing that's within the power of the city is giving leg ups to nonprofits. If you want to build a 100% affordable project in any neighborhood, including highly resourced neighborhoods, we should let you do it and we should let you go higher and denser than you would do with a market-based project. So strongly encourage you all to include that as a strategy and see what that can do.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Roland and Roland will be followed by Chris Robel. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Howard and council. This is Roland Rubinstein. A couple of key comments. First of all, I'm wondering if it would be possible for someone to enable closed captioning and if so, that would be much, much appreciated. So I really enjoyed the conversation and the only comment I have is that I raised the issue that there not, did not appear to be any planning south of, of the city, specifically around the North Fair Oaks area. And I was informed during the community meeting that this was not occurring because these areas are unincorporated. And I think that's, that's unfortunate. I don't know if the city's got any plans to incorporate any of these areas. And if not, I guess I need you to start paying attention to what the Board of Supervisors is doing. Thank you and happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you, Roland. Our next speaker, last speaker on this topic is Chris Robel. Go ahead, Chris. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, council members. I'm Chris Robel and I just moved to Redwood City from Palo Alto. So I'm super excited about learning about the new community here. And I, I did want to just kind of echo some of the comments of the previous speakers, Chris and Mike, about the importance of really looking at not just the supply side, but the demand side. So this is about, you know, the crisis we have, the Rena, the A-Bag, all these, these issues are really about a jobs-housing imbalance. So the Rena numbers are, you know, the supply side, but the demand side is driven by the jobs and that jobs-housing imbalance, I mean, so Palo Alto has, has an office cap, right? There is a, there's a limit in the number of square feet for Palo Alto, which at least is a help in terms of the, of solving the problem. If we have unbridled office growth, that's going to just exacerbate the problem and we'll never grow out of the problem. So you can't just look at one side of the equation. You have to look at both. That's one comment. Another is, you know, I, I do think and I'm, I'm, you know, I, I I think there's a concern about how much housing you jam in. I, I love Manhattan, but Manhattan would be terrible without infrastructure, specifically subways. And so we don't have the, you know, until you put the plumbing in there, it can really make life pretty miserable. And I, I don't think it's what most residents want. So I, I strongly encourage and perhaps, and again, I'm, I'm pretty new to Redwood City, but I encourage reaching out to residents to understand what they want and making sure we're not just doing what developers want. And, yeah, so lastly, and you know, I want to just say on affordable housing, there is no such thing as affordable housing. It's called subsidized housing. So somebody's going to pay for it. Developers don't want to do it. And I think we have to think about that as well. There's a lot of proposals around who's going to cover the cost of that. And that's not a tricky thing to think through. So a lot of, lot of moving parts here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris, very much. That concludes public comment on this item. Mayor Howard.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. And I know there was a request for closed captioning. Has that been enabled? Great, thank you. Appreciate it. This was a study session and no council action will be taken at this meeting. So we'll move on to item number eight, public hearing. So we'll move on to item number eight, public hearing. It's a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, otherwise known as TFR, hearing regarding issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority for the benefit of GSHIP 1304 ECR LP and resolution approving the issuance of bonds to provide financing for the thirty-nine-unit Affordable Multifamily Rental Housing Project, generally known as 1304 El Camino Real Apartments. Our housing leadership manager, Allyn Lancaster, and Anthony Stubbs from the California Municipal Finance Authority will give the presentation. Ms. Lancaster, would you like to start?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Howard and City Council members. I'm Allyn Lancaster, the Housing Leadership Manager. From time to time, the city is asked to hold a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TFR, public hearing that is associated with a private entity's issuance of tax-exempt bonds when that entity is located within Redwood City. Tonight's presentation will be on the TFR hearing, and as mentioned, regarding the affordable housing project at thirteen oh four El Camino Real. Next slide, please. Last year, the City Council approved the South Main mixed-use project, which is now known as Elco Yards. The project includes office, retail, childcare, and five hundred and forty residential units, of which a hundred and forty-seven are affordable. The project also includes providing a standalone, a hundred percent affordable building located at thirteen oh four El Camino Real. This will be a partnership between Gray Star and Hip Housing, who will own and develop the property. The proposed financing includes tax credits, tax-exempt bonds, which we are discussing tonight, and funding provided by Gray Star. No city funding is being contributed to the project. I'm now going to turn it over to Anthony Stubbs from the California Municipal Finance Authority. He'll discuss the tougher hearing process.
So TFR is simply a public hearing letting the public know that tax-exempt financing is being used on a project in the area. You can go to the next slide. This TFR is for El Camino, thirteen oh four El Camino Real Apartments. It's a thirty-nine-unit Affordable Multifamily Housing Development. It'll be consists of six-story building, all comprised of studio and one-bedroom units. And all of the units will be restricted to thirty, fifty, and eighty percent of Amer- of area median income. Next slide, please. So the debt to be issued by the CMFA will be the sole responsibility of the borrower. The city will have no financial or legal obligations with the responsibility in regard to repayment of the debt. Next slide. So tonight, we're simply recommending that the City Council conduct this TFR hearing and approve a resolution approving the issuance of this, of the financing by the CMFA in an amount not to exceed ten million dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Stubbs, and thank you, Ms. Lancaster. Are there any clarifying questions from City Council before we go to public comment? Seeing none, I'd like to ask the city clerk to facilitate public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. We're now taking public comment for item eight A, the TFR hearing. If you are here to speak about this item, the instructions for public comment are on the screen. Please raise your hand now and keep your hand raised so that we can see how many speakers we have on this topic. Okay, Mayor Howard, we do not have any raised hands for public comment on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. So I will now close the public hearing and move on to council discussion. Would anyone like, have any question, or would someone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Councilmember Smith and seconded by Councilmember Aguirre.
If I may, Mayor.
Yes.
And just get clarification that the motion was to move the staff recommendation adopting a resolution as identified on the screen.
That's correct. Yes, thank you, Ms. Ramirez.
Thank you. That, that's really clear and easy to understand. So the motion has been made by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Aguirre. No further discussion. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Councilmember Gee.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lancaster and Mr. Stubbs, for being with us this evening. Appreciate it. Moving on to item number nine, staff reports waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance prohibiting the sale or distribution of flavored tobacco products, the sale or distribution of electronic cigarettes and smoking devices, and prohibiting the sale of all tobacco products by pharmacies. Our Assistant Manager, City Manager Alex Kojikian, will give a presentation. Myra Diaz Ramirez and Edith Cabalce from the County's Tobacco Prevention Program are also here this evening to speak on the item and answer questions. We'll start with Mr. Kojikian.
Good evening, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Helen, members of the City Council. Alex Kojikian, Assistant City Manager here. Tonight, for your consideration, we have a draft ordinance that would prohibit the sale and distribution of flavored tobacco products, electronic cigarette products, and all tobacco products by businesses containing a pharmacy. So we have five questions for council consideration this evening. First question is, do you support prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco products in Redwood City? Do you support an exception for the current license holders who serve flavored tobacco for onsite hookah consumption? Do you support prohibiting the sale of electronic cigarette products? Do you support prohibiting the sale of all tobacco products by businesses containing a pharmacy? And do you support the ordinance's effective date? Tobacco has a well-documented history of negative health and social impacts on individuals and communities. Flavored tobacco is especially harmful and often marketed to youth and young adults. Flavored tobacco products are frequently viewed as a starter product that create habitual use patterns and promote addiction to other tobacco products, making it harder to quit, and may lead to increased tobacco consumption. Flavored tobacco products generally include tobacco or nicotine products that contain an aroma and/or flavor like menthol, mint, fruit, spice, sweet, or food or drink products. Electronic cigarettes deliver flavorings, nicotine, and other additives via an inhaled aerosol. Young adults are three times more likely to use electronic cigarettes than adults over the age of thirty. Electronic cigarette use has increased a hundred and thirty-five percent in high schools and two hundred and eighteen percent in middle schools. And these are in the years between two thousand seventeen and two thousand nineteen. In August twenty twenty, the California Legislature passed SB seven ninety-three, a statewide prohibition on the sale and distribution of flavored tobacco products, with exceptions for flavored shisha tobacco products, smoked or intended to be smoked in a hookah, flavored premium cigars, and flavored loose leaf tobacco. The legislation subjects retailers who violate the prohibition to an infraction punishable by a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for each violation. Governor Gavin Newsom signed SB seven ninety-three into law on August twenty eighth, twenty twenty. Shortly after the bill was signed into law, proponents of a veto referendum filed with the California Secretary of State seeking to repeal the law. The re- the referendum effort successfully gathered enough signatures from California voters to place a referendum on the ballot at the next statewide election, which is next November eighth, twenty twenty-two. Depending on the outcome of the election, implementation of SB seven ninety-three is currently on hold. So we're going to cover a little bit about local action. In the absence of an enforceable statewide ban, many cities and counties throughout California have exercised the right to impose local restrictions on the sale of flavored tobacco products. In San Mateo County, flavored tobacco ordinances have been adopted in eight cities in addition to the county's ordinance prohibiting sales in unincorporated areas. Four of those cities restrict the sale of electronic cigarettes in addition to the sale of flavored tobacco. And the county has restricted electronic cigarette sales in unincorporated areas. Only one of the cities with a ban, with a ban, South San Francisco, allows hookah-smoking lounges. At the October twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen City Council meeting, the council asked staff to return with more information to consider prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco and electronic cigarettes within Redwood City. Staff returned to the City Council with a study session on March ninth, twenty twenty, to present data and examples of local ordinances from the County of San Mateo and the City of South San Francisco for council consideration. During that study session, several council members expressed interest in pursuing a local prohibition on flavored tobacco and electronic cigarettes, and provided some feedback to staff to consider when preparing draft ordinance for consideration. Some of that feedback included prohibiting the sale of tobacco products in pharmacies, prohibiting the sale of electronic cigarettes, consider an exception for current hookah-serving businesses, consider shortening the grace period for enforcement, and ask for clarity on how the city will enforce ordinance. Prior to that March ninth, twenty twenty City Council study session, staff met personally with over a dozen tobacco retailers to discuss how a future ordinance may impact their businesses. During the study session, staff proposed a robust outreach campaign to engage stakeholders before planning to return to the City Council with a draft ordinance in September twenty twenty. In the days following the March ninth, twenty twenty council meeting, the San Mateo County Chief Health Officer declared a county-wide state of emergency due to the growing concerns over COVID nineteen. Due to restrictions imposed, the city wasn't able to conduct the planned outreach activities. Ahead of tonight's City Council's consideration, staff mailed letters to all tobacco retail license holders in Redwood City, informing them of the forthcoming recommendation, and again, encouraging them to take part in the conversation. As a result of the mailer, staff responded to four follow-up inquiries from business owners seeking additional information. Staff have also continued to provide periodic updates in the city's economic development newsletter. In addition to engaging our business community, city staff have engaged organizations and community members who advocate for stronger legislation around flavored tobacco and electronic cigarettes. In December twenty twenty, staff met with representatives from the County's Tobacco Prevention Program to discuss partnership opportunities to reduce the negative effects of flavored tobacco and e-cigarettes in our community, and to educate local retailers about the dangers associated with the products they sell. In late October twenty twenty-one, staff attended a meeting of the Tobacco Retail Work Group hosted by the County Tobacco Education Coalition to receive an update on similar efforts to impose flavored tobacco and electronic cigarette prohibitions throughout the region. The work group strongly advocated against offering any exceptions of flavored tobacco prohibitions, and they shared that there is an ongoing effort to strengthen San Mateo County's flavored tobacco ban by encouraging the candidate to do more actively, do more to actively enforce the ban, and ensure compliance by retailers rather than relying on complaint-driven approach. City staff will continue to monitor actions taken by the county and keep the City Council apprised of any changes that may impact local enforcement. Since March ninth, twenty twenty, study session, city staff have considered a variety of factors when preparing to return to the City Council with a draft ordinance, including review of similar legislation enacted within the county, consideration of newly available data, and consideration of public sentiment around flavored tobacco, and the threat posed to youth and young adults in our community. The proposed draft ordinance calls for a ban on the sale and distribution of flavored tobacco products. The prohibition extends to the sale of menthol and mint-flavored tobacco products. The draft ordinance does include an exception for businesses which sell flavored tobacco for onsite hookah consumption pursuant to a properly issued tobacco retailer's permit as of November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. At this time, three restaurants in Redwood City could qualify for the exception and be allowed to continue selling flavored tobacco for onsite hookah consumption. And those restaurants are Pachas, Rockin Wraps, and The Sandwich Spot. For the draft ordinance, these establishments will be required to maintain valid tobacco retailer's permit issued by San Mateo County Environmental Health Services in order to continue their current business practices. As written, the draft ordinance would prohibit new tobacco retail license holders who obtain their permits after tonight from offering flavored tobacco for onsite hookah consumption. In alignment with some neighboring cities and counties, the ordinance prohibits the cell, prohibits the sale or distribution of electronic cigarettes and electronic smoking devices. It should be noted that electronic smoking devices used for cannabis consumption would not be subject to the proposed prohibition on the sale and distribution of electronic smoking devices. The proposed ordinance also prohibits the sale or distribution of all tobacco products by businesses that contains... The ordinance also clarifies that businesses containing a pharmacy cannot obtain tobacco retail licenses. If no changes are proposed this evening, staff plans to return to the City Council on December twentieth, twenty twenty-one for the second reading and adoption of the ordinance. As written, the ordinance will take effect on April first, twenty twenty-two in order to provide time to adequately inform affected retailers about the steps they can take to comply with the new prohibitions. Delayed implementation has been common among neighboring cities who have adopted similar ordinances. Building upon existing outreach following ordinance adoption, staff plans to send correspondence to all tobacco license holders in Redwood City, informing them of the changes in local regulation and letting them know how they can comply. Outreach to businesses will be bolstered by the expertise of staff from the San Mateo County Tobacco Prevention Program, who will conduct direct outreach to businesses and provide further education about the changes they can expect. Other neighboring cities have also successfully leveraged the county's expertise in this area to conduct outreach to businesses during their implementation phase. Once the ordinance takes effect, tobacco retailers who continue to sell flavored tobacco products place themselves at risk of receiving a fine or having their tobacco retail license suspended for noncompliance. Redwood City Code Enforcement Division staff will work with Environmental Health Department, with Environmental Health Department of San Mateo County to administer complaint-driven enforcement, beginning with investigation by Redwood City Code Enforcement Division and referral of any violations to the county. According to the San Mateo County Environmental Health Department, which administers the tobacco retail licensing program locally, there are fifty-eight tobacco retail license holders here in Redwood City. So tonight, staff is recommending that council waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance adding Article six to Chapter fifteen of the City Code prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco and electronic cigarettes and the sale of tobacco products in pharmacies, and amending Article three of Chapter fifteen to clarify that pharmacies cannot obtain tobacco retail license. So here are the five questions again that I went over earlier in this presentation. So this concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. With me this evening is Myra Diaz Ramirez with the San Mateo County Health Tobacco Prevention Program, who can also help answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kojikian. I was going to say, did Ms. Myra Diaz Ramirez, would she like to say a few words before we ask for clarifying questions?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Howard and council members, for the opportunity to be a part of this discussion. I would like to add that the most significant increase in e-cigarette use rates did occur between twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. There was a seventy-eight increase in e-cigarette use among high schoolers and almost fifty percent increase in use rates among middle schoolers. I would also add that, according to the Healthy Stores for a Healthy Community Public Interstate Survey conducted in San Mateo County in the year twenty nineteen, sixty-six percent of respondents support a law to ban the sale of flavored tobacco products, and seventy percent of respondents support a law to ban the sale of vaping products. I also like to say that our Tobacco Prevention Program staff is available to support the city of Redwood City with providing retailer and community education. So for example, sending letters to retailers to let them know about the ordinance adoption and visiting the retailers to help answer any questions about the ordinance. We also have a smoke-free hotline where retailers and residents that have questions about the ordinance can contact us, and we can provide the education. And that's our smoke-free hotline, six five zero five seven three three seven seven seven.
Thank you very much, Ms. Diaz Ramirez. I want to thank you and your staff at the County's Tobacco Prevention Program for your ongoing work in educating people in our community, especially the retailers. And I thank you for your offer to continue doing that to help us educate people as we move forward. So thank you so much, and thank you for being here this evening. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica, do you have a clarifying question before we go to public comment?
Oh, clarifying question? Oh, no, I have comments. Sorry.
That's okay. I think we'll start with public comment. It's a, yeah, I'll turn it over to our city clerk, Ms. Aguilar, who will facilitate the public comment. who will facilitate the public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Now we are taking public comment on item 9A. This is the introduction of the ordinance prohibiting the sale and distribution of flavored tobacco, electronic cigarettes and smoking devices, and tobacco products by pharmacies. If you wish to speak on this topic, the instructions are on the screen. Please raise your hand at this time and keep your hand raised so that we can see how many speakers we have. If you're calling in, please press star 9 to raise your hand, and then you will press star 6 to unmute yourself when prompted. We have 13 raised hands at this time, so we will get started. Each speaker will have two minutes. The timer will start when you begin speaking. Our first speaker is Jen Grand Lehono, and Jen will be followed by Blythe Young. Welcome, Jen. Go ahead and unmute yourself. There you go.
Hi, thank you. My name is Jen Grand Lehono. I'm calling from the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. I'm the Government Relations Director for Northern California, and I want to thank the council for taking up this issue. I know it's been delayed for a couple of years. We've been watching and eagerly waiting for it to come to council. So thank you for taking a first stab at this ordinance. We do have some recommendations. For most of all, that you remove the hookah onsite consumption exemption and strengthen the TRL. We are supportive of the pharmacy piece. So it's imperative to remove the hookah exemption. Flavored shisha use is on the rise, particularly among youth and among individuals who were not current smokers. Those who tried hookah were more likely to report intent to try cigarettes soon, and more than one in five high school students in one study first learned about flavored shisha by seeing a hookah bar in their community. Shisha comes in hundreds of flavors, which increases the likelihood of tobacco initiation among people who don't smoke, and encourages the use of continued flavored shisha among people who use tobacco regularly. There is no cultural argument for protecting the sale of flavored shisha. Any flavored tobacco product that is exempt will become the go-to product for youth. And four out of five youth who have ever used a tobacco product started with a flavored tobacco product, and when asked why, say they used it because it comes in flavors they like. So the tobacco industry knows flavors hook new users, and there's no difference with flavored shisha tobacco. So we would ask that you remove that exemption, and then also strengthen the tobacco retail license by providing some mechanisms for enforcement. So best practice calls for suspension and license revocation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen, very much. Our next speaker is Blythe Young, and Blythe will be followed by Shawnee Stevenson. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Blythe Young. I'm the Community Advocacy Director for the American Heart Association here in the Bay Area. Like Jen Grand from ACSPAN, I'm here tonight to ask you to remove your exemption for flavored shisha in hookah lounges and to strengthen your tobacco retail permit with a minimum of one compliance check per year to make sure that you can monitor who is following the laws that you've set forth in your city and who might need to be redirected. I do want to point out that, you know, the hookah lounges that you are exempting are also restaurants, which puts them out of compliance with the state. They're not supposed to be both places where people smoke and places where food is served. One way that San Francisco retooled their policy after passing a comprehensive flavors policy was hookah lounges started selling things like steam stones, which are non-nicotine products where, if it truly is about the cultural use of the actual hookah itself, different products that are non-nicotine-based and non-addictive can be sold in their place, and so there is an option to retool businesses. And that's how San Francisco hookah lounges have stayed in business during the many years that their policy has been in place. So I would urge you to consider the best practices around the Bay Area, which are comprehensive policies without exemption. Any exemptions truly will become the go-to place for youth and for nicotine addiction initiation. So please consider matching the best practice of your fellow Bay Area cities by going comprehensive and adding a little bit of teeth to your tobacco retail permit to make sure that you have compliance within your city with this new provision that you're putting in place. And most of all, thank you for your support and thank you for your consideration this evening.
Thank you, Blythe. Our next speaker is Shawnee Stevenson, and Shawnee will be followed by Claudia. Welcome, Shawnee.
Thank you. You all can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you all for putting this on the agenda. I'm Shawnee Stevenson. I'm a project manager with the Tobacco Free Program at the Bay Area Community Health Advisory Council. I came onboard with them a couple of years ago at this point as a parent who was concerned about vaping in our school. At that time, I was a parent of three high schoolers and now a parent of one high schooler. My other two have graduated. And I'm back again after a year. Continue to urge you to think about vaping as an issue in our community, particularly for African-American youth. The tobacco company has long used the menthol cigarettes as an enticing factor in the African-American community, going back to my mom's age, right? And now they're continuing to use flavoring to attract young people and to entice them into using vaping, which is, has nicotine in it and causes addiction issues. In California, 70% African-American, 42% American Indian, 33% of Hispanic and Latinos, and 30% of Asian adult cigarette smoker smoke menthol cigarettes compared to only 18% of white adults. As we see, menthol has been used way back when, and I urge you to kind of think about protecting the health of our youth and restricting the sales of flavored tobacco. I thank you so much for hearing me out, and we do have support letters from Redwood City School District, Sequoia Adult, I mean Sequoia Healthcare District, the ACHAC, Children's Health Council, Safe Space, and so many more. And you have all of those on your records, and so I wanted to make sure. And San Mateo County Office of Ed just wanted to make sure and bring that back to memory that we have support in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Shawnee. Our next speaker is Claudia, and Claudia will be followed by Mohammed. Welcome, Claudia.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you for your time here. I am also a mother, and I happen to work with some local retailers. And we, you know, as family people, we definitely are very aware of the problems with the youth and the vaping epidemic, and we certainly never have and never plan on selling to minors. The problem lies in education and, and at home, really, the families, the parents. Addressing the youth vaping epidemic, excuse me, should not lead our local government to overextend and prohibit the sale of all other flavored tobacco products. Banning the sale of all the traditional flavored tobacco products will shift sales from law-abiding retailers in a regulated environment to an illicit market or a black market. It's very easy for minors to buy online and just have someone either sign for it, or an older brother, or an older friend or relative, and that will definitely skyrocket. Both youth and adult use of these tobacco products is at historic lows and decreasing further, eliminating the need to ban traditional flavored tobacco products. With the COVID pandemic causing so many financial hardships for retailers who have worked so hard to stay open to serve their communities, if they're forced to stop selling hundreds of flavored tobacco products, then the customers will simply drive to another store in a neighboring city or, again, purchase these products online. And since they're not regulated, again, who knows if they're laced with something or, you know, how they're being monitored. Additionally, the loss of sales will translate into lost jobs and definitely some store closures. The city should not spend time or taxpayer money on flavored tobacco product ban ordinance because California voters will already be voting in November of 2022. So we should definitely wait. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Claudia, very much. Our next speaker is Mohammed, and Mohammed will be followed by Paige. Go ahead, Mohammed. Welcome.
Hi. I'm a manager of vape shop here in Redwood City. And for the time being, as she said, like, we could wait until California votes because in other cities, they think they did a good job by banning the flavored tobacco, but the reality is all the stores, they have the products in their shelves but not seen for the code enforcement. So all that, what they do is not going to make any sense until like it's banned in the whole state. So if there's no ban in the whole state, that's mean there's, the product will still keep existing in the state, and easily everybody can get it. So it doesn't make sense to ban it in one city and keep it in other city or like ban it. It's either banned in all the state or it doesn't ban at all. About the percentage of the youth that keep using e-cigarette, there is, it's not related to, there's no other studies shows how many people used to smoke cigarettes before they switched to e-cigarette. So if you want to compare, you're going to compare past with the future, and then you give results, and that has to be public, not only agenda between other people because they have other, they want to do something else. We know that tobacco companies base a lot of money just to stop the e-cigarette, not for the benefit of youth or they care about people's health. It's just because their business got affected, and they have a lot of money to support their agenda. So we should wait until California people vote if they want it or they don't want it. Other than that, it would be like just waste of time, waste of money, and cutting peoples out of jobs. All the stores, talking about 50 stores, that's mean at least there's 150 families who would be affected with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mohammed. Our next speaker is Paige, and Paige will be followed by Lindsay Freitas. Go ahead. Can you unmute yourself, Paige?
Oh, sorry. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Paige. I live on Shannon Way over in Redwood Shores. I'm 24 years old, and I support the banning of sale of tobacco products. You know, I've seen so many of my friends firsthand get addicted to these flavored tobacco products, and heck, I've even, you know, like smelt them as they smoked them and be tempted to try them. We really need shops to stop selling them because even these, my college-educated friends, they're educated and they know the dangers, but they're still doing it because it smells like and tastes so dang good. So I completely disagree with Claudia and Mohammed, and I support the banning of sale. I think, I don't think friends or family members are going to help high schoolers and young kids buy the products. And I don't think it's ever too early to start banning these because if we ban them, we set an example and join the other cities banning them, and hopefully encourage more cities and eventually the state to ban them as well. I also support removing the exemption of the hookah lounges. Thank you so much. I yield my time.
Thank you, Paige. Our next speaker is Lindsay Freitas, and Lindsay will be followed by Bonnie Halpern-Felscher. Go ahead, Lindsay. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Lindsay Freitas with the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids, and I'm here tonight in strong support of a comprehensive policy to end the sale of all flavored tobacco products in Redwood City, including e-cigarettes, menthol cigarettes, and flavored shisha tobacco. And I respectfully urge the council to remove the hookah exemption. We cannot afford to wait. Prohibiting the sale of all flavored tobacco products in tobacco retailers is a critical step that will help protect children living in Redwood City from the unrelenting efforts by the tobacco industry to hook them on a deadly product. Flavored tobacco products are designed to alter the taste and reduce the harshness of tobacco products so they're more appealing and easy for beginners, who are almost always children. These products are pervasive and are marketed and sold in a variety of kid-friendly flavors. With their colorful packaging and sweet flavors, flavored tobacco products are often hard to distinguish from the candy displays near which they're frequently placed in retail outlets. In California, nine out of 10 high school tobacco users report using flavored products, and we can't let that continue. I ask for the council to end the sale of all flavored tobacco products. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Our next speaker is Bonnie Halpern-Felscher, and Bonnie will be followed by Javier Gutierrez.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Bonnie Halpern-Felscher, and I'm a tenured professor of pediatrics at Stanford University, a developmental psychologist, and the founder and executive director of the Tobacco Prevention Toolkit. I have over 25 years of researching why youth use tobacco. I know you're hearing from many people, advocates, parents, and youth today and who are arguing about their perspective, but I want to give you my perspective from my research. I'm happy and thankful that Redwood City is considering this ordinance, and I argue for the additions noted by my colleagues to strengthen it. This is important because as a scientist and developmental psychologist with over 170 publications in scientific journals, I can only honestly say that this ordinance is based in scientific evidence and will go far to protect our kids. Four main issues. First, we recently published a paper showing that there's a strong relationship between vaping, smoking, and COVID-19 amongst adolescents and young adults. Second, there are thousands of flavors in tobacco products, including in cigars and hookah. Flavors including mint and menthol attract young people and new users. Most youth cite in our studies and others that flavors is the reason for use and report that they would quit tobacco use if flavors were not available. Our research shows that these flavors are not just in vaping products, but all tobacco products. Third, flavors mask the inherent risk that's in the tobacco products. And finally, youth are getting these products from local vape shops. I do want to call out that allowing the local restaurants to continue to offer hookah is problematic. Hookah is flavored tobacco and has the same addictive and negative health qualities as other products, other tobacco products. Now is the time to act as we fight COVID-19. It's never been more important to keep our lungs healthy. COVID-19 attacks the lungs, and there's clear evidence that smoking harms. We must protect our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie, very much. Our next speaker is Javier Gutierrez, and Javier will be followed by Catherine Lee. Welcome, Javier.
Good evening, council, and thank you for your time. I am Javier Gutierrez, our Health and Wellness Coordinator from Sequoia Union High School District, and I am here also on behalf of our school district in support of this ordinance. Back in 2019, our board passed Resolution Number 1658, supporting the efforts of municipalities to reduce availability and use of e-cigarettes and flavored tobacco products in our communities. And I appreciate your consideration of this ordinance and hope that you pass it as it will greatly positively impact our students. As you know, our schools, and not just our high schools, but also a lot of our elementary schools are very close to retailers and other areas in town. And as many other speakers have expressed, the flavored tobacco in particular attracts our youth. And we see a rise in use from our youth in high schools, from the time they start high school to the time they finish it. We see an increase in that, and a lot of that has to do, not just with the availability and accessibility, but the attractiveness of the flavored products. So on behalf of our school district, we appreciate your consideration of this ordinance and hope that it passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Javier. Our next speaker is Catherine Lee. Catherine will be followed by Tricia Barr. Hi, Catherine.
Hi, my name is Catherine. I'm a program coordinator with the Youth Leadership Institute of San Mateo and a member of the Tobacco Education Coalition. I want to come today to uplift some of the points that were already mentioned and reiterate how flavored tobacco and e-cigarettes affect the youth of Redwood City. With the current pandemic, we've seen a trend of youth struggling to manage stress at home and school, often leading to vapes and other tobacco products in order to cope. So new vaping devices are enticing the new young smokers and erasing our success in reducing youth tobacco use. Youth are often heavily targeted by the tobacco industry, as mentioned previously, with youth youth marketed flavors and also just youth friendly marketing. The youth, the industry uses these flavors to get the youth addicted to the product and recruit lifelong consumers. We also noticed there's a gap and uncertainty around how close hookah lounges and other tobacco retailers are allowed by the schools and other youth friendly spaces. So I'd like to thank you for the time, for listening to our comments and I yield the rest of my time to the chair.
Thank you Catherine very much. Our next speaker is Tricia Barr and Tricia will be followed by Bob Gordon.
Hi, this is Tricia Barr. Thank you council members for bringing this important topic back to the council's agenda. I was on at the council meeting in October two thousand and nineteen and then again in in March two thousand and twenty, pre-pandemic. I'm Tricia Barr and I'm a parent of three teen kids. I'm also a PTA member advocate and on the high school site council. And I'm a volunteer chair for the San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition. Please move forward to pass a strong ordinance to prohibit the sale of all e-cigarettes and flavored tobacco without exemptions and to prohibit the sale of all tobacco products in pharmacies. Please remove the exemption for hookah bars. These flavors are not cultural. For example, Pasha has flavors on their menu such as white gummy, blue mist and watermelon. Regarding SB seven ninety-three, I just wanted to make a point about that. It was adopted and signed into law and the only reason it's on the ballot is because the tobacco industry paid for signatures to get it on the ballot. Senator Hill reluctantly had accepted a hookah exemption in this, but that was not, they were not welcome exemptions. And it's not the bill that Senator Hill started with. And he would urge you to pass the bill that's in front of you today without any exemptions. Also, unlike what the speaker said, there's no evidence of a black market where cities or counties have banned the sale of these products. Also jurisdictions that have adopted similar ordinances have not seen businesses closed. We know that the three hookah bars can stay open as restaurants as they have during the pandemic and they should do so. From a school and youth perspective, I just wanted to mention that the California State PTA adopted a resolution urging this kind of legislation at the local levels and at the state levels. And as
Thank you Ms. Barr, if you could wrap up, that would be great. Thank you.
Thanks. Redwood City Elementary also adopted an ordinance. It's similar to what Sequoia Union did. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Our next speaker is Bob Gordon. Bob will be followed by David Kasoff.
Good evening council members. My name is Bob Gordon, another member of the San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition. Tobacco companies bring a terrible toll of addiction and death to Redwood City residents. But you're in the position to help end that addiction and death by carefully considering the staff recommendation. I'd like to bring to your attention the provision that amends the tobacco retailer license, which would end the sale of all tobacco products in all pharmacies in Redwood City. Now Redwood pharmacies that would be included in this ordinance would be Costco, CVS, Nob Hill Foods, Rite Aid and Safeway. Redwood City could join fifty other jurisdictions in California, including nine jurisdictions in San Mateo County alone, that it completely ended the sale of every tobacco product in every pharmacy. Those nine jurisdictions in the county that have already adopted the provision are Daly City, East Palo Alto, Half Moon Bay, Menlo Park, Portola Valley, San Carlos, City of San Mateo, San Mateo County Incorporated and South San Francisco. And the provision works very simply by amending the tobacco retailer license to exclude any store from receiving a license if the store is licensed by the California Board of Pharmacy. Community members and their elected officials do have the power to decide that local pharmacies will not sell tobacco and therefore the power to change what a pharmacy is for a whole new generation of young people. Cigarettes and pharmacies don't mix. Thanks for considering this information as well as the addictive harmful shisha, hookah, tobacco, as you consider changes to the tobacco retailer licenses. Thank you.
Thank you Bob very much. Our next speaker is David Kasoff and following David will be our last speaker Lori Bremner.
Hello there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, I am introducing myself, David Kasoff, the owner of the sandwich spot here in Redwood City. And I would love to say something just about the sandwich spot in general. Since we own the sandwich spot, we always supported every single school and everything in the neighborhood around us. And we did not have any violation in these almost twelve years. Is that to me?
No, I'm sorry. I apologize for that.
All right, so we always follow the rules here in Redwood City, San Mateo County, and we always have on every single corner of the sandwich spot that we don't allow anybody to walk in after five P M. Five P M. When we start serving hookah, anybody under twenty-one. And that's how it has been since day one, since we opened. So every single person who walk in the sandwich spot to consume, or we don't sell tobacco to go anyways. So they come into the sandwich spot, they should, they have to show their IDs every single time. And that's when they come in with their own consent to smoke. I do understand tobacco is bad for everybody, which everybody understands it. But as a citizen myself and many people that they walk into the sandwich spot and they drive from Fresno and every single city here in the Bay Area, from Sacramento to come and smoke. I think we should allow only with every single, like with their own consent to walk in a place, which it is first open to. Like in an open air, we don't, we don't serve anything inside at all. So everything is on the patio and the sidewalk. We don't allow kids, we don't allow anybody even to eat or sit at a table after five P M. Unless they are twenty-one and over. Thank you.
Thank you David and Lori Bremner. She's still here. Okay. If Lori Bremner is, does not have her hand raised, there's a few. We have a few people who have spoken earlier on this topic with your hands raised. This is just a reminder that each person is afforded one opportunity to speak on each topic. And so if you were not able, if you spoke earlier and you have additional comments, we do ask that you please send those to the council via email at council@redwoodcity.org. We have a new raised hand from Bob, no Bob Gordon, we spoke already. So if you've spoken already, we aren't able to call you a second time. Please, we ask that you send your additional comments to the council@redwoodcity, council@redwoodcity.org. And it's like there's one more new hand, Ali Alram. You'll have two minutes. Go ahead. Welcome. Ali, are you able to unmute yourself? Ali Alram. Are you able to unmute yourself to keep your comment? Click the unmute. Ali, if you can hear us, if you don't mind, I'm going to go to one other public comment and we will try to get back to you if you're able to unmute yourself. I'm going to call now Lori Bremner. Lori, you have two minutes.
Thank you so much Mayor and Council members. My name is Lori Bremner with Parents. Thank you so much Mayor and City Council members. My name is Lori Bremner with Parents Against Vaping E-Cigarettes, PAVE. We hear heartbreaking stories from parents who desperately seek help as they struggle with their kids' severe nicotine addiction, which is why PAVE supports the passage of comprehensive ordinances that end the sale of all flavored tobacco products with no exemptions for any flavor, nor any product type, nor any location where the products are sold or consumed. PAVE is thrilled that Redwood City is now looking to pass the protections that kids currently enjoy in over a hundred other municipalities around the state. But we are disappointed that you may exempt onsite consumption at the existing hookah lounges who make nicotine attractive to youth with flavors like white gummy bear and mojito. Those are actual flavors on the menu at both the sandwich spot and Pasha. The sandwich spot has a kids menu food item called the SpongeBob. So your kid can eat a SpongeBob at the same place where you smoke a hookah flavor called Maui Wowie. Have a look at the photos on Yelp and see if you think exempting hookah has anything to do with respect for a cultural tradition. It's about profit, pure and simple. So we hope that you'll remove that exemption tonight and make your ordinance comprehensive. One of the really scary things is there's no way to help these kids quit. A Kaiser pediatrician broke down with emotion telling us about sitting around with her colleagues trying to figure out how to dose a nicotine patch for children as young as twelve. The state law, which is delayed for more than a year more, it's a floor, not a ceiling. You can and should go further by removing the hookah exemption. Please be bold and swift in your actions tonight. The kids are watching and they're counting on you.
Thank you Lori for your comments.
Ms. Aguilar, could you hold for a minute? Mayor Howard, do you need a motion to extend the meeting?
I don't believe so, but I'll check with our city attorney. Ms. Ramirez, do we need a motion to extend the meeting past nine o'clock?
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. I wasn't paying attention to the clock.
Oh, that's okay.
My apologies, Mayor.
You had me very worried there for a minute.
My fault. I just feel like it's eleven o'clock.
Well, thank you for shaking us up a little bit. No, it's okay.
And Mayor Howard, that concludes a public comment. I do want to remind those who previously spoke that we cannot call you a second time. So if there's anybody who has additional comments or are not able to state your comments, please send your comments to the council@council@redwoodcity.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much Ms. Aguilar and thank you to people who showed up this evening. Now we're moving on to council discussion. You'll see the questions for the city council on your screen. And we will start with council discussion and Council Member Espinoza Garnica will start.
Hi, so overall, I wouldn't want us to go forward with this. Unless there's an exemption for hookah lounges and beyond what we have so far. So from my understanding from the city manager conversations, because I read it, but I also needed some clarification that the exemptions we have are for three hookah lounges exist now. Pasha, Rockin' Wraps and the Sandwich Spot. But that means no future lounges will be permitted. That's correct, right? Under this.
That's a good question. I'd like to ask Mr. Kajiki and if he could answer that question.
That is absolutely correct. So it would be the three current businesses with retailers license that provide hookah onsite. And those were the three businesses currently and it would be as of tonight, November twenty-second.
Yeah, I would be in favor of a hookah alternative model where we, you know, look at still allowing hookah lounges, maybe we can have a range of how many lounges there are. Because I feel like there is a cultural bias. There were speakers who talked about how this isn't cultural, but ask how many council members would want to outlaw wine bars and see how they feel about it. I think this is very cultural, cultural, and I know that the flavors are new. They're not like the sixteenth century flavors you used to get of flavored tobacco, but it is flavored tobacco. And I think this role of this policy overall, if it extends to taking over to hookah, it doesn't achieve much other than acting as an authoritarian or authoritarian nanny. I think we'll have people no longer having easy access to their vices, but yeah, maybe it will travel somewhere else. I think if we want to address the real issue, it's not tobacco, it's drug addiction and drug abuse. And so the difference between a child who passes, you know, there was an example of a child who like passes by a hookah lounge and like they're more likely to go smoke it because they pass by one. Well, I mean, kids walk by busy streets and they know not to walk into traffic because they're educated. Like I think also with these, you know, it's conflating the two arguments of like the addiction with e-cigarettes to hookah experiences. You know, e-cigarettes are much newer. We don't really know what they're doing to us fully yet. But hookah itself has been a practice for centuries. Yes, there's newer flavors and newer ways to market it, but you know, it's just meeting up with the times and I think hookah lounges, they're not supposed to be like a gym or juice bar, right? Just like a bar isn't, you know, we should have our vices and we don't really need to police people for their vices as much as we have to make sure that if they need help, they can identify their resources for it. So if there's substance abuse, they have sufficient social workers and healthcare workers to work with them and identify stressors because beyond just the youth, the people they target, people of color, working class people, they don't target them just because it targets them because they have high stress. There's a lot of stress and they're trying to make it pretty. And I don't agree with that where there's, you know, trying to glamorize all this stuff. But at the same time, if you really want to see a reduction in drug abuse of any kind, you're gonna have to like address the forty hour work week that doesn't give you a living wage. And I know that sounds like a long haul, but it's not going to be done with just a swift ordinance now easily. This doesn't like this doesn't quickly resolve the issues we're seeing. Yes, a kid passes by a wine or what is it, a hookah lounge in Redwood City, but they also pass wine bars, bars. But we're not going to outlaw that anytime soon because of how westernized, especially elected people are. You know, it's a non-Western tradition. And so I think people have a cultural bias to be able so swiftly to knock down this habit as seeing as far worse of a vice than having a cocktail or having a wine lounge. I would like to see us regulate how many wine lounges we have because, you know, I'm sure a lot of people are drinking and coming home to their families like that. Or, you know, maybe they even have a drink at their birthday party that's like for the kid. You know, there's a lot of normalized vices like drinking. And I don't see us making such a swift claim to outline that as we are to hookah lounges. And so there is a cultural implicit bias and I don't think it's something that would be favorable because it's not even going to reduce the health outcomes we're looking for. We're not decreasing drug abuse, we're just making it harder to access it, which doesn't solve the issue. It's like very surface level. So I would like us to adopt an alternative that allows businesses to still operate. And I don't mean to say that like, that doesn't have to have any type of oversight of like where should be clean air. It, you know, locations, you know, some places are open lounges like the sandwich spot, you know, these places. So I just want us to think that hookah lounges can still exist. Let the state bill to address that if, if not us, but not us. So that's what I have to say so far. I don't want us to take a paternalistic approach. And I don't want us to shame each other's vices based on cultural biases. So unless we outlaw wine bars, I don't see why we're gonna put a limit on businesses for hookah lounges. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Member. Council Member ready.
Thank you Mayor Howard. I do have a couple of questions based on comments that were made. One is, what is the mechanism that would be used for enforcement for this ordinance if passed?
The mayor, is it okay if I
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kajiki and I wasn't going to touch it. I'll let you be, go right ahead. I'll let you go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So basically, the way it would work is that our city's code enforcement, we're going complaint-driven enforcement. So if we get a complaint, then our code enforcement staff would go out and visit the business. And then they would go ahead and provide the administrative site or provide the information to County Environmental Health to handle administrative citations, which are up to $250 and also to their tobacco retailer license permit revocation as well.
Okay, so there is, there's a lineal kind of step for responding then. And then, so I have to say that that my bias tends to be a concern about kids. Because in my life, friends who smoked and could not stop, had a difficulty stopping, it tended to be because they started when they were very young. And one friend was, came from a farm and he started smoking when he was 12 and he just had a terrible, terrible time stopping smoking. And, and so I do say that my bias has to do with that, that, that anything that I can do to prohibit the sale of tobacco and other products that would encourage children from, discourage them from smoking, I would, I would be behind that. I don't have a lot of energy about the hookah lounges, except for two things that were, that were mentioned in comments. One was the law that prohibits smoking and eating in the same place. And so I wondered if you could respond to that comment.
My understanding is in the outdoor patio area, so that is different than indoor area of smoking. And so in the outdoor patio area, we have what, we don't have a law in the city that bans smoking in commercial patio areas.
Okay, okay. Well, I know that, but I was just wondering if there was a, some sort of state law about eating and drinking in the same, in the same, on the same property. So no, that it doesn't sound like it. The smoking cannot be done inside, but there's no law against eating and drinking, eating and smoking in the same, on the same property.
The city attorney has her hand up. So Ms. Ramirez, would you like to add to the answer, please?
Thank you. And Councilmember Ready, I think that's a great question. And I have to say that I don't have much more to add than Mr. Kojiki has already stated. I will say that we do have the SB 793, the bill that does, while it exempts hookah tobacco retailers, it creates limitations. And so it may be that it's built in there. There are references to other laws and we can definitely look at that. We know that even if the city council were to move forward today with the, with the ordinance and the exemption, that we will have to revisit that piece of it if the Senate Bill 793 withstands the referendum. And so we're, I'm happy to look into that a little bit further to see exactly what SB 793's limitations are in answering your question, Councilmember Ready, in the future.
Well, and, and thank you very much, Ms. Ramirez. And it sounds like that's something that, that we can hold off on in case that referendum is not, the, the bill is upheld. The referendum is not successful in overturning the bill. So, so I'm very appreciative of Mr. Kasuf, and I apologize for not pronouncing your name properly, David. The, I, I really appreciate your comment and I'm, I'm wondering if the other establishments have a similar practice of not allowing people over 21 in the patio area after a certain time when the hookah consumption is taking place. I did appreciate that comment and I just wanted to state that. So do we happen to know that, Mr. Kojiki?
So specifically in anticipation of this, I'm coming forward this evening. I did visit all three businesses and spoke with all three owners and they all said that they only provide hookah to those who are 21 years and older and no children in the area. That's what I've been told. I have not witnessed otherwise or seen otherwise, so I can't verify. All I can verify is what they have told me in their verbal statements.
Okay, so I want those owners to know that this council member is going to support this staff recommendation based on that information specifically. And the fact that I would like those business owners also to hear the comments that were made by other advocates of prohibiting that exemption in saying that the bubble gum or other flavors that are attractive to children are being sold in a hookah lounge. I would like them to consider not selling those exotic flavors that are possibly more attractive to children. And, but otherwise, I do, I do support the, the staff recommendation. I think that this is a really good start and I'm, I'm proud of Redwood City for taking this first step.
Thank you, Councilmember Ready. Vice Mayor Hale? And Ms. Ramirez, did you have a comment you would like to make?
No, I'm sorry, Mayor. I forgot to lower my hand.
That's okay. Vice Mayor Hale?
Thank you. You would think by now Zoom would figure out how to simply lower your hand for you, but you know, two years and we're still not there. Well, first of all, I just want to say how happy I am that we are finally here. I remember sitting in on both of those previous meetings and it took us a long time. And to everyone in the community who waited, thank you for your patience, but I am glad that we're finally here. Schools aren't coming to us about alcohol. They are coming to us about tobacco. That is why we are hearing from individuals who work in our schools, from school board representatives and from health experts. And they are coming to us about the particular ways in which big tobacco are using these products to attract children. And especially as we heard, children of color to become longtime users and therefore addicts. So I do not support that. And I have a hard time considering Redwood City to be a nanny state when we are the only city on the peninsula that has made retail cannabis a reality. I am very happy for us to explore mental health services versus making more toxic and addictive substances accessible and in particular accessible to our youth. So I am very much supportive of what has been proposed. I do have a question about the current license holders and what privileges that would extend. So for example, would, if a business that had one of those three onsite hookah licenses, would they be able to sell that license as they sell their business? Mr. Kojiki, do you have any sense of that?
I don't have the particulars of the county's licensing system. Maybe Myra, do you, do you have that information?
No, we do not.
So I do not have that data point, Councilmember Hale.
I would personally prefer that it not be transferable, that it would phase out. Because for the reasons stated around the business, supporting the businesses, I, I think that that could be a reasonable solution and path towards transition. So I would be okay with that. But otherwise, I do support what staff has proposed. I think we need to act quickly. I wish this would have come to us sooner. We've had such a packed agenda. But we absolutely have to protect our children and when this many experts are coming to us and saying this, you know, my, my, there, there were school districts during the pandemic that said, we don't, we don't need to use masks. We have science. We have science to tell us that these things work. And we have science to tell us that these children are being injured by access to these substances. And I feel that we have a duty to act. So this absolutely has my full support. And I want to say thank you to everyone who came to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. Vice Mayor Hale, could you repeat, once again, I didn't catch it all. I went out there. What you would like to see proposed as far as hookah?
That there be, there be a sunset, so not that the license becomes transferable.
Okay.
So additionally, not allowing additional licenses. So we have the three. They would be able to maintain their business, but I personally think it would be wise to sunset those.
And my understanding is that we wouldn't be allowing future hookah lounges to open in Redwood City. Mr. Kojiki, and that's still correct?
That is currently the way the ordinance is written, that it grandfather's into three existing businesses as of tonight. So there could be no new businesses, because we're only a few hours away from tonight and not feasible for anyone to get a license at this point, at this moment. But there could be something, and I looked at the city attorney just about not transferring over a license. And I see the city attorney's hand up.
Great. Ms. Ramirez?
Thank you. And yes, I think that is the intent of the ordinance. And where the exception is built into the ordinance, we can definitely make it very clear that, that a retailer permit will not be transferable for purposes of this exception. So that to the extent, we don't know if the county does allow for those to be transferred, but that will not be honored for this city ordinance. And so we can definitely make that clarification. It's just adding a statement in the exception language and it can be done if that is the council's wish.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Councilmember G?
Thank you, Mayor Howard, and thank you, Alex and everyone, for all the hard work. Thank you to the public for sharing your comments this evening. Alex, on the lounges right now, could you share a little bit more and or remind me, since I can't tell time tonight very well, what the enforcement provisions are? Is it 21 and over and is it just a reactive enforcement when there's somebody complains? How does that work?
That is correct, Councilmember G. So it's all complaint-driven even, even today at this moment, the, the way it is enforced. And it is consumption only can be for those 21 and over. There aren't specific parameters. We don't have a program established of how to permit and regulate. That would be something completely different, like how we do with cannabis retailers, right? You have all these regulations, but we don't have that. We just have what the law is regarding consumption.
How difficult would it be to do quarterly inspections, you know, unannounced, just to check? Is that unrealistic?
So right now with staffing capacity very limited, I would think outside of complaint-driven, we'd have to look at staffing resources in order to be able to do proactive engagement.
Okay. I mean, my general thoughts are I'm supportive of all of the recommendations here. What I'd like to think about is with regard to the lounges, that we'd be more proactive with regard to enforcement rather than just on a complaint-driven basis, you know, unannounced, twice a year checks, just to make sure they're 21 and over and a little bit more proactive and that we revisit in a year after the referendum gets to the voters to see what the voters say, and then we can adjust from there. But in general, everything else is, I'm supportive of. But I, I would like to just kind of be more proactive on the lounges rather than be complaint-driven. Thank you, Mayor Howard.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this topic as always. I will say that the narrative that has really been drawn around this issue is compelling, especially as someone who cares about issues of equity in the city. Of course, thinking about our children of color, our lower-income children, this is an issue that I think definitely needs to be addressed. And I am kind of wondering about the nuance of, of the proposal. I'm specifically interested in a few of the comments that were made around the ethnic implications of hookah. There were some very kind of directed declarative statements around the ethnic implications of hookah, which was surprising to me considering kind of the narrative that was developed around the implications of communities of color. But I also noticed that in the staff report, there was no mention of ethnic implications in reference to this hookah policy. So I'm wondering if anyone on the city staff has an opinion or perspective on this issue of kind of the prohibition of hookah lounges in reference to our ethnic populations within the city and in the region?
I would like to ask Mr. Kojiki, and if you can't answer, maybe you would know who could answer that question?
So I can at least respond to Councilmember Smith's inquiry because the, the way we formulated the policy based off of the study session back in March of 2020, where they wanted us to look at keeping hookah lounges, I did not go into the detail of the ethnic or cultural significance with, with hookah. Now, my, ask Myra, I know that she's involved in this area. Myra, any, any thoughts?
I do not have that is specific information. So our program does not have that is specific information data.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Kojiki, on that point?
No, I did not look into it any further because we were looking at keeping, keeping the three operating in the city.
Got it. Appreciate that. So I have serious concerns about that line of narrative that is being developed specifically by several of the folks who are in public comment. I really need to see additional data that suggests that there is no ethnic implication in a relationship to hookah. As far as my own qualitative, subjective perspective on this, I think there is a cultural element to hookah. Again, I have no evidence to suggest otherwise. So I, I would have a serious problem in moving forward with this hookah prohibition en masse. Now, the other elements I don't have a problem with, but I would really, before I move forward with the hookah element, would need to see more, more detail on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Aguirre?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thanks Alex and the staff and especially all the advocates that came out for our children and our youth to speak and give us information on some of the things that are happening in our county and how we can move forward. With that said, you know, as I listen to my colleagues, there are a lot of things that I agree with, namely that we really need to take care of our children and making sure that things are not exposed to them, that we don't want them to be harmed for life. As mentioned, some folks that start very young. I do have a question about the three lounges that we have existing right now. Have we had violations and how many from any of the three that we know of that have been an issue? Alex, I don't know if you have that answer?
I do not have that information as to specific violations. When I've been told from public safety, our police department handles at least the usage of minors or selling to minors. And when, last time I checked, it was just retail storefronts, not actual, I haven't heard anything about hookah lounges from our police department, but I haven't checked as of recent on that. It's been a while.
And we did get information and emails today and different folks sending us data on that. And based on all of that and what I've heard, both from public comment and my colleagues, I'd be in favor of what the staff report presents to us and move forward with grandfathering them in and making sure that the ordinance is set in a way that it doesn't allow for future establishments of that type. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Aguirre. Councilmember Ready, you have your hand raised?
Only to move the staff recommendation with Vice Mayor Hale's edit. And, but I see that we're not ready for that yet.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Well, I'd like to say a few words, if you don't mind. So if you could just wait for a second, and I also see Myra Diaz Ramirez's hand raise. Ms. Ramirez, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, can Alex, can you clarify? I heard the Sandwich Spot and Pasha, and what is the third location?
It's Rockin' Wraps.
Okay, I can provide you some information that we received from Environmental Health Services as of November 2 of this year, so just a few weeks ago. That location only had a food permit and did not have a current tobacco permit. I do not have an update, but as of November 2, again, they only had a food permit and did not have a current tobacco permit.
And Ms. Ramirez, did you say that was the third one, Rockin' Wraps?
Rockin' Wraps, yes.
Okay, I think that's something we probably need to look into then.
Mayor Howard?
Yes.
The owner of Rockin' Wraps did reach out and did send a copy of their environmental health permit. I think it was last week or the week before.
Okay.
I can't verify that. I just have seen what the owner has sent, but we can follow up with Environmental Health to double check and see who has a licensed retailer as of today.
Thank you. And Ms. Ramirez, you have your hand raised?
Thank you. And I did want to mention that the ordinance does not specifically identify any business. It simply provides that any business currently in operation with a valid tobacco retailer's permit, selling the flavored tobacco for onsite hookah consumption, is accepted. And so if only two actually meet this, and there would be only two, but up to three that we've identified could qualify for this exception. So that is something that I wanted you to understand is not specifically identified, and it would just be whoever meets that exception and those specific requirements.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica, did you want to make a final comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say final words about like the points that were made afterwards, after my comment about children overall. Just wanted to make it clear, you know, that many of us are passing through many storefronts that carry vices of ours that are not admirable. We're not doing things that necessarily are healthy, but are not necessarily bad either, you know? Doing things like drinking alcohol is a choice. It's a vice. I don't see many of us probably passing anything that will be similar to a ban to wine bars in any time soon, in any century. I do think of us as behind on the trends when it comes to legalizing and decriminalizing, like in the case of marijuana, we weren't like I compare us to the speed of the bay and in San Francisco and in San Jose, they had already legalized weed when Redwood City wouldn't even allow people to deliver marijuana. So Redwood City is pretty slow when it comes to coming up with the trends that are more progressive or being open minded. And I think that results in this type of like authoritarian approach. I think if you keep hiding things or taking things away, it makes it more taboo, which makes addressing the problem even harder. Whereas if you allow people to make choices, we can help grow adults that will make their own in the long run. And I think, again, the conflation with like parents and schools coming to us right now about tobacco, it's conflated with the e-cigarettes because of their accessibility and how new they are. So many people are frantic. And tobacco before wasn't really a conversation when it was just like without the e-cigarettes. But now, I mean, it was, many people will try this. I think it's a very like self righteous crusade about morals, about what's good and what's right for the community, rather than like discussing what kind of support the community needs, rather than this approach that just takes away. So I don't think we're really valuing, I don't think we're comparing things correctly, the urgency that parents have, or you know, this agency and wanting to address this issue, it's not really the conversation that has to be had with hookah. And so I think it's it's quite silly. I do think, you know, just to address this overall, like Redwood City is pretty slow when it comes to addressing substances. And so, yeah, this may be like an immediate effect, but I don't think this is going to be really helping us in the long run. But those are just my thoughts. And I know that Diana already made a, or Councilmember Ready made a motion with the suggestion of Giselle Hale's comments. So I just want, if someone could explain to me what the amendment would be.
Well, before we begin, before I entertain the motion of Diana Ready's motion, I'd like to conclude by saying a few words. I'd like to first thank Alex and Myra, especially Alex, my gosh, you've been working on this quite a long time, and I know it's taken a great deal of your time and effort, and I really want to thank you for the thoroughness of of the report. This has taken off, well, a long time. I also wanted to thank the patience of the community because this happened, we were discussing this pre-COVID. We discussed it during COVID. It just wasn't able to get completed because of COVID. But we did promise that we would complete this before the end of this year. So I am real happy and proud to say that we did that. And thank you, Alex, because you got us there. That before the end of the year, we kept our word that we would address this issue. So thank you. I wanted to say, I don't know if everyone knows, but I am a nurse and I believe in the science and the damage that tobacco causes. I took care of patients with terrible respiratory diseases, and they, to a person, always said to me, I wish I didn't start when I was young because I couldn't quit when I was older. And I've had that confirmed by many scientists and doctors, that the earlier you start, the more difficult it is to quit, especially when you're talking about children. And it breaks my heart when I hear about a patch being put on a small child to try to curb the appetite of tobacco, knowing the damage that it does. So I am in favor of legislation that we're supporting. I do support the first, the second one, I do support the exception because I think it's it's carefully written. It will give these hookah restaurants time to make a transition because I believe if the SB 793 does uphold and it passes in November 22, it's upheld, then they will have to make the changes they'll have to make. But it also prevents us from having to give out licenses to any future hookah establishments in Redwood City, which I feel comfortable with. I do believe that we should be a little proactive because there are some better owners than others. And I appreciate that one of them came this night to tonight and told us how carefully he is trying to have a good establishment that respects the law. I really appreciate that. So I can support the exception. I also support Councilmember Hale's recommendation. I think that's a very good recommendation. So at this time, I am going to let Councilmember Ready have the opportunity to make her motion, and thank you for bearing with me as I I thought it was important as a nurse, I needed to speak up. So thank you.
Absolutely. Oh, Mayor, I'm so sorry, of course. Thank you, Mayor Howard. And I wanted to clarify too, that my suggestion about the hookah restaurants, the restaurants that include hookah, I was suggesting, making the suggestion about the specific flavored tobaccos that the child, the ones that attract are attractive to children. It was more of an optics suggestion for them so that members of the public would would not be so critical of them. So that was the reason for my suggestion, and I probably didn't make it very clear. So with that, I would like to move the staff recommendation with the addition of, oh.
There we are.
How nice.
It's right in front of you.
And has it been, has it been edited as well? Waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance of the city of Redwood City adding Article 6 to Chapter 15, Smoking Regulations of the City Code of the City of Redwood City prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco and electronic cigarettes and the sale of tobacco product in pharmacies. And amending Article 3 Tobacco Retail Permit of Chapter 15, again, smoking regulations, to clarify that pharmacies cannot obtain tobacco retailers licenses. And with the addition that the the exemption would be grandfathered in for those three.
I think Ms. Ramirez might like to help word that for you.
I can use some help. Thank you so much, but that's my motion. Thank you.
Ms. Ramirez? You have to unmute. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Ready, I'm wondering if I can help you with the added language that you'd like to add?
Yes, thank you.
So the ordinance that is before you already has the exception for onsite hookah consumption. And the one addition that I believe you and Vice Mayor Hale spoke to is making clear that the exception is not transferable to any new business. Is that accurate as to what you are trying to make a motion on?
That is accurate. Thank you very much.
Second.
And seconded by Vice Mayor Hale. Any additional discussion? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Ms. Ramirez about potential constitutional challenges to this issue around the kind of cultural significance of hookah and our kind of active banning of it. I mean, and I'm specifically actually wondering about the word hookah. Because the word hookah, I looked it up before the meeting, is derived from the Arabic and obviously has specific cultural connotations to Middle Eastern culture, like is this something that we should be interested in? How should we kind of as a council be thinking about the prohibition of this particular, with the use of this particular word as we're moving forward?
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. And I do want to mention that the ordinance itself, when speaking to the prohibition, is much more generic in identifying that no person or tobacco retailer shall sell or distribute any flavored tobacco product. And the only time that hookah comes, that hookah comes into the ordinance is in allowing for the exception. That said, I think there are other ways that this could be referenced, and if that's something of interest by the council and there we get direction on how to reference the exception or the allowance, we'd be happy to make that clarification in the ordinance itself.
Yeah, and if there's another word that is not hookah, that has, I think, significant cultural baggage, I would, I would really like to see that if it's amendable to the maker of the motion. I'm not sure if that's of significance to the maker of the motion, but for me, I am concerned about the singling out of a particular group of people within our city.
And Councilmember Smith, because this is an introduction, we would need to understand what you're asking for it to be replaced with. I can tell you that staff followed the state SB 793 reference, which did speak to the exception for tobacco products allowed on the premises of a hookah tobacco retailer. And so that's, that's already part of SB 793. And anything you would make a motion on today, we would need to understand what language you would like us to do. Another option would be to table this for further research.
Sure. And I'm not sure what that language is because I'm obviously not an expert in tobacco or the subsequent apparatuses that were used to consume it. But I'm kind of wondering if anyone is aware of whether this has been brought up on a state level at all, the use of that word in relationship to kind of, again, just kind of the association with, you know, several ethnic communities that may exist within our city or within the state as well.
Not seeing anyone who's possibly able to answer that question. But Councilmember Ready, you've been asked a question, so would you like to respond?
I would. I'm wondering, Councilmember Smith, if this might be more significant a year from now when we're, when we know the result of the 793 and whether it's going to be upheld? Because for now, this is an exemption, so it shouldn't affect what we're doing. But I do think that we do, we will need, I would like to see us review this ordinance in a year, in any case. And and perhaps that would give staff time to adequately respond to the concerns that you're raising.
I appreciate that. I think my point has been duly noted. I mean, I think that if anything, what we could do is completely remove any element to hookah from this ordinance to save the future consideration up until the point where this state legislation is passed. If that's not the pleasure of the council, again, as I mentioned, I think my point has been duly noted.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I would tend to agree with Councilmember Ready. It's in state language. I'm not looking to not be totally transparent as to what we're doing. I don't, I'm not aware of another word that would convey what we're doing tonight without confusing the issue. And I would maybe ask the maker of the motion if we would put in there that we would revisit this in November of 2022, when this goes to the voters in California. I don't think we did put that in the motion, but if you would like to include that, maybe, maybe you could.
I think that would, I think that that would. I appreciate that suggestion, and and I do appreciate the comments that Councilmember Smith made, and I would like to respect those comments. And so I think that that would. So Ms. Ramirez, if you could help me with the addition of that piece as well, that we're going to then examine, we will have this ordinance come back to us in one year.
I think you just said it, Councilmember Ready.
And if this, if my secondor would agree, then I think we're good.
Vice Mayor Hale, would that be amenable?
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. So I'll turn it over to our city clerk for a roll call.
Thank you. We'll start with Councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Oh.
Council, Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes with six votes. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica dissent.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item 9B, Compensation Adjustments for the City Manager and City Attorney Covering the Years 2019, 2020, and 2021, and Amendments to the City's Classification of Wage and Salary Plan to Update the Salary Ranges to Incorporate the Compensation Adjustments for the City Manager and the City Attorney. Our Human Resources Director, Michelle Katayoshi, will introduce the item.
Good evening, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale, members of the city council, and members of the community, Michelle Katayoshi, Human Resources Director. I will begin the presentation this evening and then turn it over to Mayor Howard to share recommendations from the city council's Ad-Hoc Committee on Compensation for Council Appointees. Next slide, please. The city council directly hires two employees, the city manager and the city attorney. The focus this evening is on recommended adjustments to compensation for both of these positions. I will begin by providing a background on the performance evaluation process, recent salary history, and the approach the ad hoc committee used to develop these recommendations. I will then ask the ad hoc committee to share their recommendations to the city council. The city engaged a professional facilitator to support the city council's annual review of the city manager and city attorney's job performance. The process including, the process included meetings with individual city council members and the council as a whole. This year, the process also included interviews with their direct reports. The city council typically considers compensation adjustments in the context of the performance evaluation. The city council typically considers compensation adjustments in the context of the performance evaluation, as is the case for other city employees. Compensation adjustments can include cost of living increases, otherwise known as a COLA. A COLA is an increase in pay to keep up with the cost of living, which includes costs of goods and services. Compensation adjustments can also include merit increases related to performance and two types of equity adjustments. Internal equity is looking at how compensation compares to increases given to other city employees. And market equity looks at how compensation compares to other comparable cities. The next slide will show the compensation adjustments over time over the last three years. Both the city manager and the city attorney each received a 3% COLA in 2019. However, as the COVID-19 pandemic unfolded, the city manager and city attorney refused their planned 3% merit increases. And the city manager, in addition, refused a planned 1% internal equity adjustment that would have also taken place in 2019. Neither position sought a salary increase in 2020. I will now turn over to Mayor Howard to begin the committee recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Katayoshi. After we conducted the evaluation process, I appointed an ad hoc committee to discuss compensation increases. I served on the committee with Vice Mayor Hale and Councilmember Aguirre. We considered three main factors in developing recommendations for the city council to consider tonight. How our city manager and city attorney performed in their jobs in the last three years. The increases given to other city employees and our citywide salary structure. How Redwood City compensation compares to similar positions in the region. Speaking for myself and the committee, we are grateful for the skills and the leadership that the city manager and the city attorney bring to their positions and to our city. We've been going through extraordinarily challenging times. Their experience and their attributes have been invaluable through this difficult time. I'd now like to turn it over to Councilmember Aguirre.
Having trouble, having trouble with my computer. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I totally agree with what you have just said. And we really, I appreciate the fact that you brought me into this committee. We've done a lot of work. We did a lot of, we had very, very long questions for our consultant, wanted to make sure that we worked with everyone, not only on staff, but that we compared a lot of cities as we move forward. We also noted that the work that was done by our, both our city manager and our city attorney. And so I agree with the, you know, how we are moving forward. I want to thank Michelle for her work in this and for being very patient with us because we had a lot of questions and a lot of concerns as we move forward because we want to be fiscally responsible. And we know that these raises represent something very important and also for, not only for our staff, but also for the community. And we feel that it's been equitable and just for the amount of work that they do. And as we compare with other cities, I think we are not on the top and we're not on the bottom. So I want to thank you, Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to share some ideas.
And now I'd like to turn it over to Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes, thank you. And it was really valuable to have a three-person committee focused on this. We ended up, I think the assignment was effectively for one meeting, but we took two because we really wanted to go in depth. And in particular, we wanted to analyze a lot of data. So we had a lot of questions required follow-up. You know, we looked really closely at benchmark data. So we wanted to understand what was comparable for the region. And if you go to, I think it's slide nine, this was sort of the basket we looked at of other cities. And we were very picky about this basket. We looked at features like population size, general fund size, staff size, so that we could really triangulate on what is the right set of cities that we should be comparing to. And in particular, spent a lot of time on the Mountain View data point because we've actually had a number of staff exchanges between Redwood City and Mountain View. And so we thought that was a very realistic data point to use. And as you can see here for yourselves, you know, Mountain View, 341, Redwood City, 303, and the average is 311. So we, we do see quite a bit of difference between, you know, Redwood City and its peers. And that extends to the city attorney comparison as well. So she's about 20,000 behind the average comparison city. So and it was also important for us to look at the city's revenues, the city's budget. Had that also grown over the time period? Because we were reticent to make the recommendation if that had not also grown, but it indeed, it indeed had grown by 20%, which was significant. And these are the staff who are tasked with really steering the use of those funds because we only hire these two staff. They make all of the other decisions. So that was a very important piece of information for us as well. And so then when we put all of that together, based on the performance evaluations from the council for the city manager and the city attorney, and then in light of the fact that the employees did not take a pay freeze during the pandemic, and the fact that other city managers and city attorneys are paid more, and those, also I should mention, those city managers and attorneys, they also did not take a pay freeze. We were the only city where they had done this. So we recommended a 10% increase effective July of 2021. And that is really about going backwards, right? So covering the years of 2019, 2020, and 2021. And then we also recommended changes to the employment contracts for both employees so that the COLAs given to the department heads after '21 also be given to the city manager and to the city attorney. And so this will help us to avoid compaction, which is a policy that we have, a compensation policy that we have on the books, and stays closer to the average among our comparison agencies. And then the final recommendation was to adjust the city manager's salary in the next two years, if needed, to keep that compaction, the 10% differential between the city manager and her direct reports. And then speaking for myself, not for the committee or the council, I will say, I think it is important. We have, you know, a team led by two females, which is very rare in our region and something we would love to see more women aspiring and minorities aspiring into these roles. And I think that they should not be asked to do something that their peers are not being asked to do as well. I could not support something like that. So that concludes our recommendation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. At this time, I'd like to, before we go to public comment, I'd like to ask if there are any clarifying questions from the council that either the ad hoc committee or our staff can help answer. And you see the recommended action on the screen before you. I see no council clarifying questions at this time. So I'd like to ask our city clerk if she would administer the public, facilitate the public comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. We're now taking public comment on agenda item 9B. This is the compensation adjustments for city manager and city attorney. If you wish to speak on this topic, the instructions are on the screen. Please raise your hand at this time and keep your hand raised so that we can see how many speakers we have. If you join by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. We have four raised hands. So we'll get started. Each speaker will have two minutes. The timer will begin when you start speaking. Our first speaker is Chris Robel, and Chris will be followed by Johanna Rasmussen. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You're welcome.
So I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this, council. I, as I mentioned earlier, I just moved from Palo Alto and I'm a retired CFO, so I'm pretty much all over numbers and follow the Palo Alto ones closely. And as it relates to compensation for the council-appointed officers, the Palo Alto has the same situation where they compare the city manager to others, to compare to other cities. And the argument that they always give is, well, Palo Alto is unique and it needs to make more of the city manager because it has its own utilities. It has its own airport. It has a municipal golf course. It has municipal water services that it provides to other cities. So it's a much bigger organization, over 1,000 people, et cetera. So that, you know, and the salary for the Palo Alto city manager is about 355,000. So, which of course I think is too much as it is. Context, right? President Joe Biden, his salary is 400,000. So he's the President of the United States, 300 and some million people. So it doesn't really make sense, you know, for us to be comparing to other cities. And, you know, I think a lot of the residents would argue that there, a lot of the cities are overpaid. And so I have no, I just think it's important to kind of lead on a cost competitive, competitive as nature and make sure that we're comparing the, I believe Mountain View has also some services that I don't think Redwood City does. I'm not sure about that, but I know Palo Alto has a lot of services and they always, that's the rationale for why they, why the edge cut of the city manager is paid more than, you know, in the 355,000 range. 10% is a huge increase. Where everybody's going through tough times, I would really encourage you to be fiscally prudent and stewards of the taxpayer money. Thank you.
You, Chris. Our next speaker is Johanna Rasmussen, and Johanna will be followed by Tanya Sole.
Thank you. Johanna Rasmussen, Farm Hill Neighborhood Association. The 10% retroactive annual pay raises for the city manager and city attorney totaling 80,000 per year are excessive. They do not reflect the needs or best interest of our community. They are not equitable. Redwood City's hourly employees, who make much, much less, were offered 3% raises this year. The following community members join me in asking you to vote no. Sherri Jennings, Merrily Robinson, Gail Mann, Cheryl Easterbrook, Leslie Stafford, Elaine Dela Cruz, Francine Taylor, Dory Bannell, CJ Chambers, Alexis Weiss, Chris Rasmussen, Liz Martin, Irma Hernandez, Christina Umhofer, Suzanne Chaula, Lisa Hora, Taylor White, Deb Henkin, Debbie Silva, Lucy Silva, Chris Smith, Donna Zorniki, John Kucha, Gail Nelson, Molly Tinney, Jim Dudley, Gabriela Avia, John Gianano, Karen Rogers, Margaret Lesnick, Elaine Tipton, Kendra Bronson, Teresa Mary Me, Stephanie Palazzo, Whitney Palazzo, Marshall Mariucci, Diana Mariucci, Natalie Luther, Gina Conti, Adam Kellogg, Barbara Palusa, Laura Owen, Rihanna Ahmed, Christopher Cloud, Cynthia Wilson, Cheryl Roth, Susan Kelly, Mary Lou Echols, Jamie Waddell, Chris Robel, Stephanie Rosso, Corey Battle, Stephanie Rusi, Vanessa Hancock, Stephanie Giovinetti, Carol Cassidy, Gary Fischstrom, Tony Mariucci, Doreen Cozad, John Palazzo, Annette Parker, Michael Zeheim, Sharon Russell, Marissa Blasien, Gillian Pearson, Bill Russell, Eric Olson.
Thank you, Johanna, very much. Our next speaker is Tanya Sole. Following Tanya will be Chris Johnson.
Hello, I am Tanya Sole, resident of Docktown. I am speaking today against the raises for the city manager and city attorney. I think it was the last city manager that compared himself to the CEO of a private company. Unfortunately, or fortunately, as the case may be, that kind of talk has permeated this city. The reality is that a lot of private company CEOs make less than what some of their employees make. And I am not talking about those that only take a symbolic cash compensation package of $1 per year. The reason that they do this is that they understand that they are managers and sometimes need specific expertise that is more expensive. To have a clause that guarantees the city manager a 10% premium over all other employees is downright offensive. It leads to the creation of a two-tier employment structure, low-paid employees whose pay is kept artificially low so as not to increase the overall city payroll, and a separate tier of very highly-paid employees who are really the reason why the low-paid employees must be paid less, but also allow the city manager to keep arguing for additional raises. While I strongly disagree with the raises to begin with, an ethical city structure has no business paying a salary of a manager to one of his or her underlings, especially when he or she is responsible to a large extent for approving those raises. It raises real conflict of interest issues and does a disservice to the organization as a whole. In addition, the only reason a person serves this city is because of money. We should also not be interested in that candidate. Finally, to Vice Mayor's argument, Vice Mayor Hale's argument regarding increasing income to the city. As a resident, these are actually incurred in raised fees which run counter to what the goal should be. This is not a for-profit corporation. This is a city. We do not want employees who look to maximize revenues by, I'm almost finished, by increasing fees on residents and worse yet, to increase those employees' compensation when in effect they are hurting the residents they manage. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our final speaker on this topic is Chris Johnson. Go ahead, Chris.
Good evening, city council. Once again, I couldn't agree more with what Ms. Rasmussen, as well as Ms. Sole, have outlined as some very compelling reasons why these raises should not be approved. An annual 10% raise totaling $80,000 a year for the city manager and city attorney is not in line with residents' wishes or the current needs of our community. I remember the first time that the, the raises were denied or, or as refused, I think, is the word that was used. And all of the goodwill and that that garnered in the community, like, wow, look at this. Our executives are sucking it up for the greater good of the community. Not once did I hear anybody declare that three years from now, we're going to ask for that money back. That wasn't mentioned once. And what I have not seen in the competitive information that was provided to the committee that was formed is what are all the other cities doing that forego their raises for their executives? Where's that competitive analysis on how they have scratched that money back from their residents? So I support everything Ms. Sole and Ms. Rasmussen said, and I have plenty of names here, people that have also support these statements. Brenda Pearson, Joshua Strayem, Lisa Recker, Valerie Batones, Chris Keen, Ingrid Kirsten, Lupita Mejido, Nathan Cresswell, Janet Columbe, Barbara DiVincenzi, Pamela Beard, Laura Escobedo, Patricia Owen, Angela Rogan, Javier Mendez, Margaret Beerman, Julie Pardini, Barbara Conklin, Rita Carney, Michael Wilton, Gato Rivera, Lizette Torres, Charles Riley, Mateo Taylor, Nancy Jones, Danny D'Antoni, Diane Stowe, Carolyn Foster, Lee Miller, Donna Schreiber, Jennifer Rodriguez, Jeff Kirkish, Mary Lou Weisheimer, Judith Kerfoot, Annette Garcia, Delania Whitstone,
Thank you, Chris, very much.
Deanna Sellest, Mary Campbell, Cindy McKay, Stephen Wright, Jody Preer.
Mayor Howard, that concludes public comment on this topic.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. Okay, now we're going to turn to council discussion. And the recommended action is on the screen before you. Who would like to begin? Councilmember Ready? I was ready to pipe up and start, but.
Thank you. Yeah, well, you would have saved me. So I, what can I say? I hear you. Thank you so much to the speakers. Thank you, Mayor Howard, for letting me speak. Thank you to the speakers. I, I hear you. I hear what you're saying. It's, it seems like a lot of money. It's, it's a lot of money to me as well. Thank you to the speakers. I, I hear you. I hear what you're saying. It seems like a lot of money. It's a lot of money to me as well. I Redwood City is known not just in the county, but beyond for the for the high standards that it has and for for the amazing city that it is, and that's not an accident. Such a standard is not created in a vacuum. And there needs to be a way for us to let our let our staff know how much they are appreciated. And it isn't just cities where they have a ten percent compaction. When I worked for the Sequoia District, they also had a compaction and our superintendent for refused a salary increase and it impacted the principals because there was a ten percent compaction between the superintendent and the and the assistant superintendents and the principals. So there was a, there was, so it isn't just cities that have that kind of a policy. It's also in school districts as well. And we need to be able to let our senior staff know how very much, how important they are, how much they are appreciated and valued, and that we recognize that Redwood City is special and it's not special by accident. And during the pandemic, when those raises were refused, we didn't know what was going to happen. And yet, the decisions were made to protect staff, to make sure that no staff was going to lose their job and to ensure that the most vulnerable in our city were taken care of at a level that was not seen in any other city in San Mateo County and probably beyond. And we have lists of the things that Redwood City was doing during the pandemic that no other city was doing. And that was because of our city manager and her staff and the enthusiasm and the commitment they had to our residents. So I heartily support this recommendation. I know that it isn't a popular recommendation, but I heartily support the recommendation and I heartily support our city manager and our city attorney, and I don't want them going anywhere. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Howard.
Thank you, Councilmember Ready. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yeah, I think I share the same. I know I share the same sentiments as Councilmember Ready. It's to me, it's since it's dispersed three years, like 2019 through now, and it's COLA. You know, this is what they would have gotten regardless. And I think from what I understood from conversations that one percent is also to meet the competitiveness because, you know, it seems like in the past, Redwood City has lost city manager to Mountain View and we gained a city manager to Mountain View. And it just seems like we do have to play a little bit at this competitiveness to keep our folks, even though, you know, this is a public service. So what I would like to see is that like we encourage all of our negotiating teams to receive the same, you know, to receive adjustments that are, you know, aside from COLA, also adjustments for living here, you know, like the standards for living here and remaining competitive. I hope that we can, you know, have the same standard for our other city employees who don't make nearly as much. I don't think something like this should only go to our administrative employees. There should be a standard throughout all of our employees, new, starting out in different departments, you know, and receiving adjustments that will well compensate them. So I know that this is well compensation, but I'm hoping it's a standard that we can have for our city employees and, you know, all of our employees to have adjustments that are to living adjustments plus what's reasonable for living here, like actually, and for the work that they do. So I hope that we can see more increases in pay overall for our employees. And, you know, I hope this encourages more that in our negotiations, you know, I wouldn't want this to be only offered to any type of adjustment only be offered to one track of or one tier of professionals. So those are my thoughts on it so far.
Thank you. Would anyone else have any comments? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just a few quick comments. I'll second actually many of the comments made by my colleagues, those who presented and those who made comments. I do think that the steps that the city manager and city attorney took during COVID were, they actually went above and beyond. And I I think that that is an immutable fact. By not accepting COLA increases for that long period of time was something that was not normal and something that needs to be appreciated, I hope, by most members of the community and understanding that while they rejected their cost of living adjustments, the standard of living and the cost of living was continuing to rise here in San Mateo County, and that is just a fact. So the question is, do we, you know, want to appreciate that fact or do we not? And so I want to appreciate that fact, but I also want to emphasize the point that Councilmember Espinoza Garnica made. I think that we need to really be thinking very seriously about the level of parity in terms of wage increases that we're seeing within the city. I think that using the city manager and city attorneys benchmark increases as something of a guide, a framework to thinking about our negotiations with different city-related unions and just specific city-related staffs is appropriate. And I would just hope that my colleagues would continue to think about that as we move forward with thinking about what is a livable and living wage for all members of our city staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Ms. Kat Seoshi.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. If we could return to slide number six. I wanted to go over that briefly. When we talked about the ten percent recommendation, it is over a three-year period, 2019, 20 and 21. And I wanted to highlight what increases were given to other employees. So you see in 2019, there was a cost of living adjustment between three percent and three point five percent. And then some employees were also eligible for a merit increase. The range is two percent to seven percent, depending on their bargaining group. And again, in 2020, all of our represented groups received their to their cost of living adjustment as well. The range was three to three point five percent. And again, some employees are eligible for their merit increase. And now in 2021, there are a few groups that did receive a three point five percent COLA at the beginning of the year because it was, it had been approved in their current MOU. But the city is currently in negotiations right now for the other groups for 2021 as well as 2022. And again, some employees are eligible for the merit increase of two to seven percent. So, you know, that is correct in that we did not reduce any of our teammates' pay during the pandemic. We also did not have any layoffs and we continue to support them. And I wanted to share the raises that were given to the city workforce during the past three years. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for doing that. I was going to ask if you wouldn't mind reviewing that in light of some comments. And I just wanted to let people know this is what actually was given these last three years. So thank you. Thank you very much. Would any other council members like to comment at this time? Seeing none, I would like to say a few words and then I'll entertain a motion. And thank you. Putting up the recommended action on the screen again. That's great. Redwood City is a city of eighty-five thousand plus people with an annual budget of over a hundred and fifty million dollars and over five hundred employees. During my twenty years of service on the Redwood City Council, I've served with four city managers and five city attorneys. And I'm familiar with many of the current city managers and city attorneys of other cities. And I can honestly tell you that our city manager and our city attorney are in the top tier. However, they're not getting a top-tier salary compared to their peers. Let me state for the record, the intent and the recommendation here tonight is not to try to accomplish that. As a city, we have always tried to stay competitive while trying to remain in the mid-range of our comparable cities. I'm very proud that we have all done that from the city manager to every employee. We have tried to honor that. I feel this recommended accomplishes this goal in that we are recognizing that we are trying to bring them to the mid-range. I believe the quality of their work is amazing. During COVID, I don't think we could have asked for a better, not only the city manager and city attorney, but the whole staff stepping up to the plate and doing above and beyond what was asked of them. And other cities were calling us and saying, how are you getting this accomplished? How are you doing this? It came at a sacrifice for our city manager and our city attorney. I have great respect and admiration for what they offered to do these last three years. They made our job easier. And now it's time to show how much we value them, how much we appreciate them, and that we want them to stay. Talent and leadership, the qualities that these two women have, they're not easy to find. And you need to respect that and really hold on to that. So I am strongly recommending this action. I know it's not a popular one, but I will stand behind my recommendation. We have good staff and we can't afford to lose our good staff. So having said that, I will entertain a motion.
So moved, Councilmember Ready.
Councilmember Ready has made the motion on the screen before us.
Second.
Don't need to read that. Councilmember Aguirre has seconded that. Any additional comments? Seeing none, I'd like to ask our city clerk if she would read the roll, please.
Sure. Let's start with Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Councilmember G.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you to our staff and thank you to the ad hoc committee for the work that you put into this. And thank you all. Moving on to item number 10, matters of council interest. The 2022 city calendar, meeting calendar. I need a motion and a second to accept the city meeting calendar with the changes that were noted on the calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Aguirre and seconded by Councilmember Espinoza Garnica. Ms. Aguilar, could you call the roll, please?
Yes. We'll start with Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. 10B, City Council Member Reports from Regional Committee Meetings, Events and Conferences. And I believe Vice Mayor Hale will give an update on the Bay Area 2050 Plan. Vice Mayor Hale?
Thank you. And I realize I do need to screen share. Apologies, clerk. I think I was supposed to send you the deck, but I did not do that. So let's see if I'm able to do that.
No worries. You can do that.
Great. Okay, wonderful. Let me see if I can make this bigger. Why is it not going bigger? Okay, great. So I wanted to update everyone on something you've probably heard quite a bit about in the news, which is the Plan Bay Area 2050, which was recently adopted by a joint meeting of MTC and AAG, which I sit on as a representative for San Mateo County. I wanted to share a bit about what it is and how it fits in and actually could not have picked a better meeting to do this than the same evening we discussed the housing element. Briefly, before I get started, just for distinction, RENA versus housing element versus Plan Bay Area are very different. RENA is, is the allocation that we are required by the state to meet for housing goals. The housing element is the plan we're required to create to achieve those goals. And then Plan Bay Area is, and those are an eight-year period. But as you can see, Plan Bay Area is actually a plan for the year 2050. So this is a long-range planning. And it's long-range planning focused on a variety of issues. So this was kicked off, and this is a first, a first-time-ever initiative in 2018. And it was really focused on all of the uncertainty that our region is facing, along with all the challenges. And how could we get ahead of that and think through what initiatives would make a difference towards achieving more equitable outcomes for residents? That's really the scope of this project. And this was a first-of-its-kind type of long-range planning. And it looked at a variety of impacts, like how we could, you know, explore strategies for uncertainty around a variety of issues like climate, how we could lead with equity, how we could pursue more innovative public engagement, which is certainly something that this council has talked about in several meetings. And then how we could have unified staff from both boards. So we work together between AAG and MTC on the creation of this plan, laying out a roadmap around what it would take, and then integrating from both. I'm sorry. Oh dear, I have screen issues here. Oh goodness. There we go. And then being able to integrate strategies across the board, sketching out a vision for sea level rise impacts and much more. So this was a really deep, thoughtful process that took place over close to 200 meetings with you know, 200,000 public comments received and a lot of very specific targeted outreach. In particular, I wanted to highlight that I thought the group did a phenomenal job of engaging youth. They had a really strategic plan about how they would engage youth that I would actually love to see our city look at more deeply. But they were definitely a part of it. This is a video that I won't share, but that was something that we all listened to and heard more about, hearing from the youth about what it means to them to impact the region where they're going to grow up. So this was adopted and it required, we required quite a bit of input and I'm sorry, I cannot see because the, okay, there we go. I can get rid of the gallery here. We looked at all the guiding principles. We discussed which ones we wanted to advance, what we wanted to include. And then we rolled that into a final plan, which was the plan that was adopted. So there was a lot of fact-finding, a lot of discussion. And then the findings in the end were what were included in the vote that just occurred. So actually, I meant to skip this slide. Sorry. Oh no, there we go. So some of what required, we added some additions around maps. We looked at what specific transit projects we think would help to advance these goals. And we clarified and provide context on a lot of the public comment that was received. So this wasn't a static exercise. It was truly layered with a variety of public comment coming to bear in the final plan that was actioned on. And as you can see here, there's a very sizable document. It is available at planbayarea.org. Would encourage everyone to give it a look, maybe not a full read, but get a high-level sense of what this could mean for our communities. And really where this is now headed now, because it has achieved adoption, is moving towards implementation with a variety of partner organizations. So this is not happening solely through AAG and MTC. It's happening with It's happening with a variety of partner organizations in the transit space, in the climate space and in housing. And so, yeah, this slide lists that there are actually 45 potential partners in public, private and nonprofit sectors that are going to be part of the implementation plan for the document. And there was a large emphasis on partnerships. This is not about reinventing the wheel. It's about accelerating that work and helping to elevate how it fits in with the broader challenges and solutions facing our region. And just wanted to highlight a couple of examples. So for housing, they, we discussed five pilot projects that range from a project focused on homelessness prevention to more transit-oriented development policies, which, both of which we were talking about earlier this evening. On sea level rise, really thinking ahead to what will be needed on funding and investment for some of those rather costly capital expenditure projects that will mitigate those impacts longer term. And then what can be done to accelerate climate strategies that will reduce greenhouse gas emissions with a specific focus on this one on electric vehicles subsidizing and marketing and getting, driving the adoption. And so the plan is now adopted. It will now move into implementation. They intend to provide regular updates to A-BAG, to MTC to understand how we are doing, if we're achieving goals. And I would be happy to provide updates, you know, possibly a year from now on what, what's already taken place, what's been implemented and where we're seeing traction. There we go. Thank you. Mayor, are you there? There we go.
I got stuck on that. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Thank you so much. And thank you to the clerk for allowing me to share. I'm sorry I wasn't able to send those slides in advance. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
I think we were all impressed with how you handled that very well.
That was a first. We haven't had to do that very often. And I couldn't get them to save, so there was a problem. So thank you.
No, you did just beautifully. And thank you for the explanation. I really appreciate the update. Now we'll move on to our city manager update. Ms. Ramirez? Ms., excuse me, Ms. Diaz.
I'm sorry. No problem. Thank, thank you very much, Mayor. Is the sound okay?
I can hear you. Yes.
Okay, great. So I have a couple of updates. So keeping on our housing theme for this evening, I did want to provide some good news, and that is before the end of the year, it looks like we'll be ready for occupancy at two long-awaited new housing, affordable housing developments. The first is the Hallmark Apartments at 531 Woodside Road. We're now at 95% complete for these affordable rental units. And we believe they'll be ready for occupancy by the end of the year. We are still having applications be available for living at the site. And residents are encouraged to apply at hallmarkhouseapartments.com. Additionally, the affordable for sale units at the Habitat for Humanity Project at 612 Jefferson is now 80% complete construction. And we think they as well may be ready for occupancy by the end of the year. Turning now to our local business community, you may know that it is Shop Local Saturday, this Saturday. And one of the great ways to do that is by using our new app. Redwood City is one of seven participating cities in the county who are, along with the county, participating in Choose Local San Mateo County. And that's a free smartphone app that will offer reward points to folks who patronize local businesses. So by shopping in a Redwood City business, you can obtain points that can be used as a cash discount. And this is one of the many strategies underway to help our businesses recover from pandemic impacts that have been felt widely in the community. You can receive this at any place that you get apps for your smartphone. And let's go just close with a couple of quick COVID-19 vaccination updates. Wanted to be sure to share to the community that both booster appointments as well as first and second doses of COVID-19 vaccination are available at the San Mateo County Event Center. The county encourages residents to apply at the myturncalifornia.gov website. Although appointment is not required, it is encouraged and may help with reducing wait times. And long-awaited children's vaccines are also now available. And there too, it's best to go to the MyTurn website. You can also check pediatric provider websites such as Kaiser or Sutter or Stanford, as well as local pharmacies. Additionally, the county is offering their Playland Appointment-Only Children's Clinic at the event center. And in fact, there are clinics available this Wednesday from 9 to 1, from Friday from 11 to 6, and Saturday from 9 to 4. And at this point, 14,000 children ages 5 to 11 have been vaccinated in San Mateo County. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Diaz. Our next city council meeting is scheduled for December 6th of 2021. It will be the reorganization of our city council. I'll be turning the gavel over to Vice Mayor Hale and making City Councilmember Diana Ready the new vice mayor. I hope you will join us. Right now, tonight, we will be adjourning in memory of Shirley Gibson, an attorney for the Legal Aid Society who was a dedicated housing advocate for our Redwood City community. And I'd like to give the honor to a personal friend of Shirley's, to Councilmember Diana Ready, to adjourn in her memory. Councilmember Ready?
Thank you so much, Mayor Howard, for giving me this opportunity to, to speak about Shirley. The housing community is reeling from her passing and I really appreciate your letting me do this. Redwood City recently lost a beloved fierce housing warrior, Shirley Gibson. Shirley was the directing attorney for the Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County, who also partnered with the city on essential housing projects such as anti-displacement plan, the Challenge Grant Initiative, preservation program for unsubsidized affordable housing. Shirley joined the Legal Aid Society in 2007 during a time when more than half the eviction lawsuits in San Mateo County were uncontested, meaning tenants received default judgments and were rapidly displaced. Shirley built a team to change that. Within a few years, the default rate of, in eviction cases had fallen to 35% on par with other counties with comprehensive eviction defense programs. In the 14 years Shirley led Legal Aid's housing team, she affected the housing landscape in San Mateo County and California in countless ways, impacting court procedures and precedents, local ordinances and state legislation. When the COVID-19 pandemic hit, Shirley conceived and implemented a fundamental strategy. A strategy shift from a high-volume eviction defense practice to focus on helping low-income tenants access new tenant protections and rental assistance. As always, she based her strategy on collaboration, building and nurturing strong partnerships with other housing advocates, cities, the county, tenant advocates and community organizations. Shirley was brilliant. She was a brilliant visionary, weaving, weaving together complex strategies involving litigation, tenant outreach, community organizing and public policy advocacy to further housing equity. She was a fierce advocate who loved to tell the story of the time an attorney for one of the biggest national banks called her the biggest pain in the ass in the entire state of California. That's my favorite. She was tenacious, yet she was kind and generous while always holding everyone accountable, especially herself. On top of all of these honorable qualities, she even had a great sense of humor. This is a tremendous loss for all who knew her personally, for all the clients at Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County, and for all the unhoused residents and tenants whose lives were made immeasurably better by the work that Shirley poured her heart and soul into. Thank you again, Mayor Howard, for giving me the privilege of reading this file.
And thank you, Councilmember Ready. That was beautiful. Good night, everyone. Have a safe night and we hope to see you again soon. We're adjourned.